Going to get stuff done. 6:40, I'm calling this meeting of the AMSA Board of Trustees to Order, our regular March meeting. And we do have a full agenda, most of it's an open session. We will have the executive session also to discuss pending litigation, to consider the purchase and lease of real property, and strategies for collective bargaining because doing so in open session would be detrimental to our position. But I don't expect executive session to go really long.
Attention Walmart customer.
Wow, am I doing something? This meeting is being videotaped. So let's quickly review the agenda. A couple of you have spoken to me about moving things around, which I think should be, or at different times. We will not have a finance update, I believe, because Lucy's not here, but I believe that the financials are in the packet. So you'll have a chance to review those, and if you have questions, you can ask her. But she'll be back for next month. And next month actually will be our budget, so it'll be a pretty comprehensive financial review. So are there any other questions on the agenda then? Anyone want to move anything around?
Pauline, I'm sorry I didn't say this to you, didn't think to you before. We have Mark Vidal is here presenting for development.
Great.
And so if we could move that up, then he could get out earlier.
Okay.
If you don't need, I don't mind. If there's any inconvenience, don't bother.
We'll be here either way, so.
We'll be here either way, exactly. Otherwise, you're very far down, so I'll move that up. We'll move that up. Okay. Let's just do the opening items then, and then we can do our guest presentation, and then we'll move to the ED report.
Yeah.
That way?
That's good.
So we can allow our guests to present and then leave. Okay. So let's take a look at last month's meeting minutes. So February meeting minutes.
You're going to have to project them because I printed very even pages to you. It only did the so much to check them.
Oh. Okay.
I moved the "We accept" page as 1357.
"We accept" pages. They are pages. Do we have the ones from the two executive sessions? Okay. Because those were just the open session parts that we had to approve. We can do this next week.
Well, you can approve someone else, but I can do them because it's just the opening and closing is no business.
Except that people should look because of votes and, you know, the motions.
For some reason, I can't download the file, so I can show it on board on track, and I don't know if that's...I guess that's better.
We could also just do these all next month. Should we just do these all next month? Is that, that's fine, right? If we just, if we approve these next month?
Yes, I want to continue to.
Would that be better?
Yes.
Let's just do that, because that way we can do all the executive session ones as well.
Why shouldn't we post those?
Yeah. Is there anything in here that we should, that would be important to post? Well, I don't know, because I can only read every other page. So, no, let's just do them next month. I think we're probably, okay. All right. Public comment? Was there anyone's?
No.
I'm guessing not, because there's very few people in the audience. All right. Let's move to Brianna's update then.
So relatively short update this month, shorter than usual. As everyone is well aware, we've had a lot of snow days. We had vacations since the last meeting that we had, so things have definitely been very choppy the past few weeks. So currently, teachers have been informed, or starting to be informed, about their schedules for next year, in terms of what they're teaching, and the number of sections and all that. So, and the scheduling and vendors have been in the process of calculating class sizes, and again, seeing what, what number of sections are necessary, given the enrollment for various classes next year. We also unfortunately had our last PD day that we were supposed to have canceled because of the power outages at the school after the big snowstorm. So, which is unfortunate, because every department had something kind of exciting scheduled, a more kind of a field trip department-based PD. So hopefully, you know, we can be able to do that next year, maybe over the summer, since some of those are really good for, you know, department bonding and being able to, you know, get focused on our content areas, which is always our first passion. We're also, you know, currently exploring and weighing options for the end of the year. So last week, Ms. Lindsay sent a survey out to see, you know, teachers, two teachers to see if anyone would be interested in some creative solutions to our very late end date at this point. And so we're currently, there's a lot of people kind of weighing in on that issue, or that idea, to see if, you know, could we do Saturday sessions? Should we, you know, extend half-days? That kind of question, just because right now our end date is on Tuesday, June 26th, which is pretty late. So, but, but most schools are dealing with that too, statewide. And then the only other kind of concern at this point is just very dependent because of the snow days, with anyone who teaches an M-class class or an AP class, because we've, again, we've lost so much time and those exam dates don't shift. So there's a little bit of anxiety for those teachers, just with, again, the inconsistency in the scheduling, which obviously is, it's no one's fault, and it's part of the job, but just makes it a little difficult for the teachers who are in that group. And then lastly, there have been a continuation of some different committee meetings. So we have the Student Handbook Committee has been in the process of being formed a meeting, and then the Procedures and Protocols as well, which was one of the areas of need that was identified through the Strategic Planning Session back in the fall. So that's been just beginning to get underway too. So another opportunity for teachers to voice their interest and concerns, and have those be heard by the larger school community. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Then we'll move on to our parent rep update. Jill?
So I have only received one question since the last meeting about the facility. The question still remains, you know, what are we going to do about the facility situation? When will we have an answer? And I just keep assuring people that as soon as we know, we will announce it, and we're working hard. And everyone, obviously, is still just waiting to hear. So that was the only real question that had come up. I did receive some really good feedback from a sampling of parents regarding the family survey. We sent a draft of, I sent a draft of the family survey to about 20 parents, just to get a sense of how they felt the questions were going. And I did get some good feedback, so that was helpful. The parents were receptive and very eager to help, so that was good. Trustee day went very well. I was very impressed with the first trustee day. And I was able to kind of bounce around and see about nine classes. One thing I might suggest for the future, though, is some sort of allotment for lunch, or some, like, remember to bring your lunch, or, we were all starving.
We had thought about that, yeah, we thought about that, and that's actually a good point for, because I do hope we can do it again next year, so yes.
But it was very informative. The teachers did a really good job of presenting what they wanted us to see, or what they wanted us to know. The kids did not seem disrupted at all. In fact, one thing I noticed, the kids were all very, very polite. I mean, not that you wouldn't expect them to be, but, like, all ages. I remember there were seventh graders leaving Ms. Tebow's biology class, and almost every student was saying "thank you" on the way out. Like, I just thought that was great. And I think everyone who, I don't know if everyone's seen the latest video update that Anders and Ellen did, but part of that update included going to four different classes. So the updates are more for the parents, and the parents love them, they're great. Like, the last one, if you haven't seen it, you have to see it. It's really funny. Because, like, Dr. Lewis has a football theme going on there. But I thought it was great to go into four different classrooms and kind of give that perspective to the parents, too. So, because I saw it as a trustee and as a parent, and I thought the video really did a good job of showing some classes. So I would suggest maybe keep doing that in the future. And I think that's all I had. Yep, any questions?
Yeah, just one question, and I'm so sorry I missed it. So, as you mentioned, we'll do it again next year. Any chance that we'll do something similar sooner than that, or? Because I know we're welcome.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that you reach out to Ellen and try to schedule some time if you are interested in coming in. I don't think we'll be able to do it like we did, and, and I'm going to give an update on it, but I don't think we'll be able to do it again like we did until sometime next year. The question is, do we maybe try to do it one in the fall and one in the spring, so that there are two dates, or something like that? We can, we can talk about some ideas at the next ed committee meeting.
And I don't want to be disruptive or give anybody extra work to just prepare for me to start.
Yeah, but absolutely, and, and many of the teachers said that we're welcome anytime, so I would just.
Yeah, that's actually, I think we have a policy on that, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
We do. I mean, any trustees are, just need to coordinate through the principal.
Yeah.
For your own schedule, particularly those of you who aren't parents at the school. I think it's really helpful for you to be able to see the classrooms in session. So feel free to reach out.
And none of the teachers who volunteered backed out when we had the reschedule, so it wasn't dependent on, you know, it originally being March 8th. So I feel that, you know, obviously you could check with them, but you could probably use a very similar schedule that has already been developed, if you just picked a day that worked for you. And I can double-check with those teachers and see if their classes are still open, and give you a sense of what you can see. And anyone else who couldn't make it, too. I can help arrange that if you're, if you're interested for this year.
I can make the trustee day?
Yeah.
Yeah, make your own trustee day.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, let's skip over the ED report, and we'll go to have Ms. Preston's presentation about the World Languages and Art Department.
Well, thank you so much for having me tonight, and I look forward to telling you a little bit more about the World Languages and Art Department. And Mr. Vidal has been so kind to do the clicking for me, so I'm just going to go So first, I wanted to just let you know about the courses that we offer. In the middle schools, you probably know Latin is required from grade six to eight, so that's not reflected up there. But once they get to ninth grade, they can either continue on with Latin, or they can choose to begin Spanish or French. And we offer college prep honors and AP in all three languages. And next year, we're also excited to offer Intro to Ancient Greek, which will be for juniors and seniors, and that will be an elective. So we'll move on to the next one. So the objectives for us, first and foremost, we feel very strongly that everyone is capable of learning a second language, and that everyone would be benefited by it. And the, our objectives are that we will continually be developing the four skills of listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and that to gain knowledge and understanding of other cultures, to make cultural and linguistic comparisons, to make connections with other subjects, and to participate in communities both at home and around the world in other languages. So those are the objectives for all of our languages. One of my goals this year has been to expand our interdisciplinary projects between World Languages and Art. And so here are just a few that I wanted to highlight, certainly we have more. But recently, Mr. Fuller's eighth-grade Latin class did a really fascinating unit on the concept of self. They looked at statues and monuments. Students analyzed the facial expressions, for example, in statues to kind of think about what that statue might be thinking, and they connected that with the concept of self. And though, at the same time, those same eighth graders in Ms. Klautman's art class did their self-portraits. Or if they weren't comfortable doing a self-portrait, they could do a portrait of someone else. And so both of those teachers worked collaboratively, and we'll have that project on, on display soon, and also at our next Arts Night in the spring. So we have also some really interesting ones. We've got French Impressionism and Drawing and Painting. So Ms. Norton's Drawing and Painting students did a reproduction of some famous French Impressionist works. Those same students who took French wrote a description and analysis of the painting in French, and then did a presentation in French for their French class. And also, in the fall, Ms. Tarrell, who's an art teacher here, she was a guest lecturer for Mr. Clark's Spanish for Film class. She did a presentation on the Mexican artist Frida Kahlo, right before his class watched the movie Frida, about the artist. So here are some highlights of the, some of the major milestones that we've had in the last five years. I became department head in 2013, so I picked that year. When I started, we had an incredibly strong Latin program, but a lot of, a lot of our focus was solely Latin, in terms of our celebrations and what we recognized. So I've really worked hard to, to expand our other world languages while still keeping our Latin program just as strong. So just to give you some examples, we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, that's in the fall. And all of these, I'll be giving you a little bit more information in the upcoming slides. We also have Flamenco Workshop. We had them come for the first time two years ago, thanks to a cultural innovation grant. And these are Flamenco artists and musicians, which is a dance that's from, originally from Spain. And so they came to interact with our Spanish students, and they showed them how to do the dance. They, you know, brought the Flamenco music with their guitars, and students got to actually practice the steps with them. And it was really incredible. Students said it was one of the best things that we had done all year. And we're bringing them back later this May. And I should mention that they also came to one of our community meetings and did just a brief performance. So we're excited to have them come back. And it's just an example of how we want the language to come alive. We don't want to just study it from a textbook, but we want students to experience it authentically. Whoops, wasn't quite ready, sorry. I don't know if you know how to go back. Thanks. We also celebrate National Foreign Language Week. We actually just, just wrapped that up again this year. It's celebrated every March, and I'll be showing a slide of some of the things that we did. I've also expanded the national assessments that we give. So in addition to the National Latin Exam, we now also do the National Spanish Exam. This will be our third year doing that. And we just finished our second year doing the National French Contest. And the last milestone that I'll speak about is that we launched the National Spanish Honor Society, which is AMSA's first academic-specific honor society. And I started that with a group of 30 students in the fall. So I'll tell you a little bit about that, too. So just to kind of go through those a little bit more, so Hispanic Heritage Month, this is something that we celebrate in the fall for a month. And some of the things that we do is we have morning announcements related to Hispanic topics and major achievements. We also decorate. We had a huge wall of famous Latinos and their achievements, and we did some, some songs over the, you know, morning announcements that were in Spanish. We also celebrate Day of the Dead. So what we did the last two years, we had a workshop after-school that was done in collaboration between Spanish and art teachers. And any students in the high school could come, and they could paint sugar skulls, and they learned a little bit about the Mexican tradition. That was a lot of fun. And there's a lot that we did, certainly, in the, in our Spanish classes as well, to recognize that. So we also just recently celebrated National Foreign Language Week, which is in March. We kind of extended that over the course of two, almost three weeks because of all the snow days. So one thing that, that we do is we have different students say each morning, "Good morning and have a great day," in a different language. So we've had students say it in French, Spanish, Creole, Portuguese, Russian, Arabic, Farsi. I'm still always looking to continue to offer that. So whenever I have a student come up to ask me if they can do that, I absolutely say sure. So I think we might actually have someone say it in Navajo tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to that. We also put some decorations up in the cafeterias. So we had an international flag banner from countries from all over the world. We had, you'll see, it says "celebrate National Foreign Language Week" on the top picture. We had on the different cafeteria tables, we had a little table tent of how to say hello in different languages. And we decorated the bulletin board with greeting words from, languages from all over the world. So again, it just, the point being that we, we want to celebrate AMSA's rich cultural, linguistic diversity, and really not just AMSA, but, but our community at large. So that's what we try to do with that. That's the international flag banner that we had up. And so I wanted to tell you a little bit more about the National Spanish Honor Society, which again, is AMSA's first academic-specific honor society. I am the advisor for that, and I'm really excited to be doing that. We inducted 30 students, most of whom are juniors, and then several seniors. And some, some of the criteria is similar to the National Honor Society. They have to have at least a 3-5 unwed GPA. They have to meet a certain grade requirement in Spanish, and certainly meet the character criteria as well. The mission of that is to celebrate students' achievements in Spanish, to foster their, their growth in the language, and also to really encourage community service that is related to Latino causes in the area, but also to the whole community at large. So one community service that we're just finishing up now is a food drive. It's a food and toiletry drive. Actually, we have one of the posters up here in the cafeteria. And it's going on until tomorrow, so there's still time to bring something in. And that is going to be donated to the Marlboro Food Pantry, as well as the Spanish American Center in Leominster. And students have to complete at least 15 hours of community service. The last milestone that I wanted to talk about are how we've expanded the national assessments. So again, we've been offering the National Latin Exam for quite some time now, I would say for at least 10 years. And our students have always consistently performed very well. Last year, we had three students with gold, six silver medals, five bronze medals, and five honorable mentions. This year was also the first year that we began using an online National Latin Exam on the computer, which worked a lot more smoothly, so I think we'll continue to do that. It's a lot easier than paper and pencil and bubbling and all that. National Spanish Exam, this will be the third year that we're offering that. And this is a great way to, to measure our students against other students nationwide, to use the national standards. It's also a good way of sort of tracking our data and seeing how our students are doing, and a good way to, to prepare them also for the AP exam. So we will have students do that in early April, all, all Spanish students. Last year, we had a number of students that earned medals, six of them with gold, 14 silver, seven bronze medals, and almost 40 honorable mentions. And then also want to talk about the National French Contest was just, we just offered that for the second time, so they just, just did that last week with Madame Zobro. And last year, Kate Longenova, who is now a junior, got a perfect score on the French exam, which is absolutely unbelievable. It's an extremely difficult test, and she scored in the top 0.01 percent. So she, her picture was in the National French Journal for that. So we're really proud of her, and very thankful to Madame Zobro for, for helping to prepare her as well. And I should mention with that, that none of these milestones would have been possible without my amazing department. I'm extremely fortunate to have rock-solid teachers in the World Languages and Art, and I'm really, really grateful for them. I want to talk about the vision. So three, three areas that I wanted to talk about briefly. First is to expand the language selection at AMSA. Second, to introduce languages earlier on in student careers. And then third, by doing so, to then offer more flexibility in the language selection. So those are the three points that I'm going to talk about right now, just sort of my big vision for change. So we want to offer more language selection, and something that I have been thinking about for quite some time, that I would very much like to happen and make it reality, is to introduce Mandarin at AMSA. It is the most widely spoken language in the world, and is spoken in addition to China, several other countries, Malaysia, Taiwan, Singapore, Indonesia, et cetera. It is also the third most commonly spoken language in the United States, and that continues to grow each year, because more and more schools are offering it. It is really the language that needs to be, to be offered, and I'll get into that more in a moment. China's also really emerged in the, in the global economy. It's one of the US's most major trading partners, and it's certainly a critical language to know for, for business and trade. So those are some of the reasons why. I did research on other schools that are offering Mandarin. This is by no means an exhaustive list. This is just a sampling. I could have easily filled up multiple more slides. But just so that you are aware, Acton Boxborough, these are all schools that offer Mandarin. Acton Boxborough, Concord Carlisle, Framingham, Hockington, Lexington, Marlboro, Needham, Wayland, Wellesley, Westborough, and Westwood. So again, this is by no means exhaustive. It is getting to be where it is almost about as commonly offered as Spanish. So the other point of my vision that I wanted to explain is that, in addition to expanding the language selection to include Mandarin, the vision is also to introduce languages earlier on in student careers and to give them more flexibility. So the idea would be that students would continue to learn Latin in the sixth grade, along with Greek and Roman mythology, and that's something that is very well-aligned with our history and art curricula. So we want to maintain that, and we also believe that Latin is good for building their foundation in Romance languages. The change would be that, starting in the seventh grade, instead of being required to continue on with Latin, that they would be able to choose either French, Latin, Mandarin, or Spanish. So that would, that is, that would be the, the change. We feel that there are many benefits to that model, one being that this would give the students the ability to study a language for six consecutive years, so from seventh grade all the way through their 12th grade. Whereas now, students for French and Spanish only have the ability to do that starting in ninth grade, so they have a maximum of four years. And we find for French and Spanish that we unfortunately have to race through a lot of material. We only have, we only get through Level 3 before AP, whereas at most other schools, they get through Level 4 before AP. So it's, it's very challenging with our current curriculum to get where we need to be for Spanish and French. And by having two more consecutive years of study, that would also enable us to really delve so much deeper in the material, to do more cultural enrichment. Naturally, we would have the ability to build their proficiency more, because we'd have two more years. And with all of that, they would be better prepared for the Advanced Placement Exam as well. So before I move on to art, does anyone have any questions or comments that they want to talk about with World Languages, or, yes?
This is great. Thank you very much for the presentation. And I have two questions. One, just from what you just said about cutting the Latin requirement from two years to one.
Be three to one.
Three to one. So what's the cost of that? What do you, what do you sacrifice?
Of course, and that is the next big, big step, which, I mean, step one is, is getting people's support and approval, from, starting with, of course, Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay, also your, your support and approval, and then I need to further look into the fiscal aspect of it. It is a little difficult to fully answer that question, because it, it depends on what students choose, right? So we do have, I can tell you that we have a new teacher this year, Blair Clarkson, who is licensed to teach both French and Spanish, which I think will be really helpful. We also have another teacher, Ms. Maria Arteaga, who is capable of teaching both French and Spanish. So we do have some, some flexibility, and they're also open to, to learning and growing with Latin, which is really incredible.
Oh, I didn't mean the financial cost.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there something magical about, you know, like, that first year of Latin, in terms of foundations?
Oh, okay, I see. I thought you meant that financial.
Sacrificing education.
Oh, okay. Is there something, so why, why the need to continue on with Latin for one year?
No, just, I mean, there's, there's costs and benefits.
What happens, if you give, if you give up years two and three, what is the downside
If you give up years two and three, what is the downside of that?
I personally feel that the benefits outweigh any potential drawbacks. Of course, I in no way want to underestimate the value of Latin. You know, Latin has many values, and it helps to build our foundation in Romance languages. It helps to build our English vocabulary. However, I also feel that by, I feel like it would be more advantageous to give students the option, because then that would perhaps make them more engaged in class if they're choosing to take a particular language, instead of having it be a requirement. And again, so I guess what I'm saying is that the benefits outweigh the any potential risk. And again, they would still have the ability to continue on with Latin. Certainly, we want to keep that, the Latin program, strong, and we have a really, really large, strong Latin club that I imagine will continue to stay active.
And the other question I had was, and you touched on, you sort of touched on it a couple of times, but what does the variety of languages that are already spoken by the families at AMSA, how does that affect your thinking about, and we call them foreign languages, but they're not foreign to the people who speak them at home? So how does that affect your thinking about the language program?
Sure. Yeah, we do, we do have a number of students who speak Spanish and Portuguese in the home. And that, we, you know, welcome their experiences at home, and we feel that they have a lot to add in terms of, for example, there are many different ways of saying an expression in Spanish, depending on which country that you're from. So it's important for us, when we're teaching that language, to recognize the various dialects and cultures from the different countries, and not just, you know, talk about Spain, for example. I can tell you what we're doing also. We have some, I have had a number of students recently, if eighth graders, take a language placement test, if they speak Spanish at home already, or even Portuguese at home, to make sure that they're placed in the right level. So it might be that they could jump into Spanish too, or it might be that if they're not quite ready, and they need, you know, maybe they speak it fluently, but they need some more writing and grammar practice, and then I'll review that with them over the course of the year to get them more ready to take the language in the high school. So you're right, we do need to be very cognizant of students and their other languages that they speak at home. It is interesting to note, I did look to see, as you can see on that list, well, you can't see it anymore, but it was on there before.
Right.
That's okay, Mark. It's okay. Thank you. Although Portuguese is a very commonly spoken language, it's actually very rare for schools to offer it as a language, which is interesting. Hudson does offer Portuguese and Spanish, but there were almost no schools that offered Portuguese. Having said that, I think, you know, perhaps we can start a Portuguese club or Portuguese student group. That might be something else that we could do.
It's also very interesting the way you talk about, say, using the example of Spanish, is that you use that as a way to accelerate the growth of those kids in Spanish. So their struggle in Spanish is strong, maybe the Spanish, you know, so they can leapfrog over certain steps, because in so many school systems, in so many communities, people consider the second language a handicap. It's a handicap that somebody speaks Spanish. They're not bilingual, they're ELL.
Hmm.
And so that you're looking at it that way, I think, is really important.
Oh, absolutely. It's definitely, definitely not something that I see as a handicap. I mean, if we have students who are already speaking a second language at home, such as Spanish or Portuguese, I think that that's a real asset.
Or Farsi, or Mandarin.
Oh, of course. Any, knowing any other language besides English is a huge asset. But certainly in terms of if they're studying another Romance language, and they already know a Romance language, then certainly that can only help them.
Thank you.
Has the ELL program affected what you do? Because they get pulled out, right, from these languages?
It has a little bit, and ELL is not under me, but I can speak about it a little bit to the best of my ability. They are pulled out more in the middle school, so I would say that it definitely impacts Latin primarily, because often if they, if they need to be pulled for either reading or ELL, they'll be pulled out of their Latin class, so that they can focus on building their English skills. I, you could say that, I mean, naturally, that student is not going to get as much Latin study. However, we do feel that it's first and foremost, they need to make sure that they're strong in their reading and writing in English. And then certainly, they are invited to go back to Latin as they, if they perform out of the ELL program, they can go back to take in Latin. And if they express a real interest in Latin, then they can study on the outside and also have the option of continuing on with it in high school. So if there's that interest there, I know our Latin teachers work with those ELL students when they return.
But you don't see it as hurting your program?
The ELL?
Yeah.
No, not at all. I mean, it's, we have to, we have to meet the needs of all of our students, and what's in our students' best interest
Of course.
when it comes to ELL, would be to give them the support that they need with English.
The question is, what does it do to you in your program?
I don't see it as being, yeah, I kind of see it as a separate issue.
As Chris said already, Sarah, I think this is excellent. I'm just wondering, is there any industry, are there industry surveys or industry resources that you also use maybe to help shape the courses that we offer here that tie into, say, future jobs, and where the industries are headed from a, you know, particular job perspective?
So, yeah, I think you raise a tremendous point, and actually, something that I would love to do is to perhaps have guest speakers come to our foreign language classrooms that talk about not just, okay, you know, obviously, it's awesome to be a teacher, I love that, but what other opportunities are there professionally in that language? And there are so many opportunities. And I know that we do the Career Fair at the end of the year, where students have an opportunity to meet with people from all different professions. It would be terrific if we could do that type of thing.
Sure.
Perhaps in the foreign language classroom. So you raise a good point, and I'd like to do more with that. I mean, I will say that we, when we talk to our eighth graders about what language, the different languages that we offer, and some of the strengths that each language has, we try to get into some of the professional benefits of them, but there is more that I'd like to do with that, so.
Yeah, that would be great, because then we're giving them a competitive advantage, you know, actually, of college and then afterwards. And my other question is more technical. What's a sugar skull?
Oh.
I want to go home thinking about it.
Okay, yeah, so a sugar skull, so first of all, the skull, the skull is a symbol that is commonly used with the Mexican holiday of the Day of the Dead, because the, in that culture, they feel that death is not the end, but it's more a continuation going into the afterlife. And so the skull is not seen as a morbid image, but rather something that they like to see as connected to life. So they, so the sugar skull that you saw there is literally, it's made out of, it is edible, although we told the students that it was not, because they were painting on them and using feathers and such. So you'll see them if you were to go to a Mexican bakery at the time of the Day of the Dead, at the end of October, along with Pan de los Muertos.
Okay.
And it is something that, when they are done painting it, they can put it on the altar, and they create sort of an altar in their house, where by the mantle and their fireplace, they, it's a time for them to honor their loved ones who have passed away. And so they'll put on their altar, in addition to the skulls, they'll have maybe a picture of their loved one, and some of their favorite objects next to that. And they feel that their loved ones who have passed are with them on that day. So, long answer, I don't know if I.
No, that's good. Yeah, I feel better now. Thank you.
We'll have to Google it.
Could I add something to, to your question of, in regard to Ms. Preston's desire for Mandarin? As Ms. Preston said, you know, Mandarin's the most spoken language in the world, third most spoken language in America. China's, I think, the second-largest economy in the world, perhaps will be the first by 2050. I think in general, and not just in foreign language, but in the history department too, in ELA, we're trying to pay more attention to Asia, which is long overdue. Our curriculum from 2005 was very heavily focused on Europe and European history and culture, certainly very, very important, don't want to deny that at all. But I think we do need to pay much closer attention in foreign language, in history, in literature, to Asia.
Yes, very good point.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
So should I move on with art? And so this is not quite as long, so if you're starting to get tired. So students are required to take one credit of art, and here are the courses that we offer for the high school. We have chorus, we have Western Art Masterpieces, which is essentially an art history course, drawing and painting, three-dimensional art, printmaking, multicultural art, digital media, which is a new course offered this year that I'll talk about a little bit more in my next slide, and AP Studio Art. And that is the course that is, the only course that is one credit, the other ones are all half a credit. And prior to taking AP Studio Art, they need to have taken Western Art Masterpieces and Drawing and Painting. So digital media, we're really excited about this course. Again, this is the first year that we're offering it. It is a course that is interdisciplinary, that is co-taught by computer science teacher, Mr. Alvarez, as well as art teacher, Mr. Morgan. They teach side-by-side in a computer lab, and they build off each other's strengths and expertises. And the main areas of study in the class are digital photography, graphic design, animation, and video. And next year, we will be offering that again, and we hope that in the future, with better facilities, that we'll be able to offer a media lab that's exclusively for this course, that we can offer more sections of that. It was extremely popular. We had way more students sign up than we could, than we could teach for this particular course. We were only able to offer one section because of the lab availability. So our visual art objectives come from the National Art Standards, and students will be able to use the symbolic language of the visual arts, learn about the history and criticism of visual arts and architecture, their role in the community, and their links to other disciplines. Our curriculum, our curriculum is very closely tied to history in the middle school, and so that's something that is really, we have a lot of interdisciplinary connections there. Also, to see their own personal style and discriminate among, excuse me, historical and contemporary styles, understand how societal influences and prejudices may affect viewers' ways of perceiving works of art, which is something that we get into more at the high school level, particularly in the multicultural art class, and develop an idea through multiple stages responding to criticism and self-assessment, something that we do in-depth in the AP Art in particular. Arts Nights, we just celebrated our fifth anniversary, and I think that each year, we've gotten a little bit better, certainly with visual arts. What we do now in terms of what we, how we decorate and display it all, I think, has really grown. I'm really grateful to fame to the Friends of Arts and Music Education, for parent volunteers who have really given us a lot of support with our Arts Nights and our Arts Program. So we have Arts Nights in both winter and spring. We had one in late January, and it is a way to celebrate AMSA's visual arts and performing arts. So for example, in January, we had the chorus perform under Mrs. Jessica Bowen, and also the a cappella group, also under her. We had the jazz band perform, or two jazz bands, I should say. Drama Club did a skit, and I covered all of them. And then in addition to the performing arts, we have the artwork that's on display, everything from sixth grade all the way up to twelfth grade AP. And I think we have really incredibly talented students, and it's nice to, you may not know that, that your students are so talented artistically, if you only see them in the academic classroom, right? So I think it's nice to recognize that other side of a student, and to not only celebrate students for their academic or athletic achievements, but to also to celebrate their artistic achievements as well. And I would just say also that certainly, an auditorium and music room would do wonders for the experience here. I think we all know that. Obviously, the acoustics are not ideal in the cafeteria. And also, it would be nice if we didn't have to, you know, we put a lot of work and time into decorating the cafeteria and transforming the whole space for Arts Night, but sadly, we have to take it all down. So it's, the work is only up for a few hours, and then we have to take it all down. And it would be nice to have a way that we can display all the talented students' work on a more long-term basis, so that's something else. And I should say that our Spring Arts Night is coming up on Wednesday, May 23rd, so I invite you all to come to that. It really is incredible to see what our students can do. I also wanted to recognize two art students who just were recognized by the Boston Scholastic Art and Writing Awards for their visual artwork. And unfortunately, I don't yet have the artwork to show you, but that will be coming up soon, I hope, on an AMSA update. So Anna Cherkinsky, who is a junior, so class of 2019, she received the highest award, which is the Gold Key, for her painting A Dog Walk, and she will represent AMSA as she competes nationally for, from the National Scholastic Office. She's extremely, extremely talented. She's in AP Art. Indy May, who is only a freshman. And those of you who came to Spring Arts Night, if I were to show some of her artwork, I'm sure you would be like, oh, my gosh, she's the one. She's so incredibly talented, and she also is in the jazz band. She received the Silver Key, which is the second highest honor, for her painting, Anthena Persephone. And so again, watch for their pictures and more details about that in the AMSA update. So this is a very condensed version of the vision, because I know there's only so much time in the day, but I do want to say that clearly, we are hoping at some point, when we have new facilities, for really dedicated performance and rehearsal spaces. So an auditorium and music rooms, which would allow us to have our plays re-performed, musical shows, art shows, all of that. We also are looking to have prominent locations to showcase student artwork year-round, so that we can have, you know, glass display cases, for example. We'd like to do more with online galleries. It has been really great, I should say, with Mr. Finkel. He's done so much with the AMSA update, with all of our different media, to get a lot of pictures and news out there that wasn't out there before, so that's been nice. And I'd like to expand that even more with some online galleries. We'd also like to have dedicated full-time staff that's for chorus and band, so that we can also have more music offerings. And as I mentioned a little bit before, to have a visual media lab, so a lab that's dedicated specifically for visual media with all the cutting-edge professional equipment, so that we can offer more for students in the way of that. So I know, you know, a lot of dreaming big here, and all of this costs money, but I have to at least put it out there.
Great. Never stop dreaming.
You picked the perfect night, though.
Yeah.
You're kicking off the campaign tonight.
So.
Maybe we can use the Arts Night as a fundraiser.
I know. Yes, we are always.
Auction out the art?
We are always doing fundraising at the Arts Nights and putting those resources towards our arts programs, absolutely. So the last, last thing, I just wanted to mention that next year, we're excited to be launching the National Art Honor Society. That will be launched in the fall under art teacher, Ms. Terrell. So that should be the second, you know, academically specific honor society here. And that will be a way to give our art students opportunities for scholarships, to recognize them nationally, and to also connect them with students nationwide. So that's something that we're looking forward to doing next year. So again, there's a lot more that I could say, but does anyone have questions about that? I have one last.
Just one question about the AMSA update videos.
Yes.
I think they're very well-produced and very informative and funny at the same time.
Yeah.
Are the students involved with the production?
I can't speak to that, because I can't take any credit for the AMPSA update, except that I love it, and I think it's added a lot, a lot of value to AMPSA. I don't know if anyone else wants to, to comment on that.
Mr. Finkel, this production studio.
Up till now, I haven't enlisted many talents of our students, but I have talked to Ms. Lindsay about maybe working with students for editing, shooting, I would enjoy that. I think we should just now figure out how to do that, sort of process it out.
Yeah, I think it's a good way to get them exposed and interested.
Yeah.
But they're awesome. Keep them popular.
Yeah.
I just have a comment, elaborate, elaboration, I guess, on the interdisciplinary aspect of the art curriculum, especially in middle school. All the time, the students make connections. It happened just this week, actually, we started a new unit, and I had a picture up, and they're like, "Oh, we saw this in our class." So it's such a strength.
It's there.
Yes, such a strength of our, of our middle school curriculum, and we have a lot of the connections with ELA, too. And even in high school, you know, if we do like an image analysis or something, and the students are able to go back to their art foundation that they get in middle school, and they know all the vocab to use to analyze an image, and, you know, they still retain that over the years, too.
Absolutely, that's a really good, good point.
Just have a logistical question. Are you able to put these slides up on the AMPSA website?
Absolutely.
Parents, parents will be able to see the mission?
Absolutely, yeah.
Last month's are up.
Last month's are up. These department ones are going.
Okay.
And the presentation will be out there, too. It just got posted today, last month, Dr. Jurey. So, parents will be able to go online and see the presentation as well.
Great, yeah. Well, I just want to thank you all very much for, for your support and for listening. I know it's probably been a long day, I know you're not over yet, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will bump up the Development Committee presentation. This is the kickoff, the annual campaign kickoff.
So that really was very well timed. So as we've been talking about since January, is that really, in order to do Sarah's wish list, in order to adequately compensate teachers, in order to really build the kind of future that we want, we've got a, our fundraising has to move to a whole different level. And that requires new ways of thinking about it, and really, you know, kind of reimagining it from the ground up, trying to get some expert advice, but really pushing it forward. So we have, the Development Committee was unable to meet in, in March due to the snow, we're meeting twice in April. We do have coming to visit us at the end of April, and Rick and Pauline, I'll talk to you about the dates, they've been moving all day long. But we have two guest speakers coming in, one of whom is the Director of Alumni Relations and Annual Fund at WPI. And the other is the former Executive Director of the Boston Arts Academy Foundation, who are going to spend some time with us, kind of complementing some of the work that, that Mark and, that Mr. Vital and Dr. Lewis have been, and Ms. Lindsay have been doing, reaching out to places like the Parker School and Boston Prep, and all that, to kind of learn from the best to the best. As we begin that, we're starting AMPSA's annual fundraising campaign. And I would love to, on behalf of the committee, take credit for all the terrific work the staff has done. So, Mark's been in this position for four months now? Something like, and so he's been very active, he's really been out there with a lot of new thinking, with a lot of, a lot of energy, making a lot of connections. And Dr. Lewis has also, and Ms. Lindsay, have been very much involved in everything up to this point, and really, I think, cheerleading the way they need to be, and leading the way they need to be. And so, I asked Mark to come tonight, he's done a lot of work outlining the campaign, and this, in a lot of ways, will be the kickoff.
It will.
So, over to you, Mr. Vital.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone, for the invitation. Hopefully, I'll get through this in about five, 10 minutes, though many of my students would bet against that. Tonight, we budgeted, or you budgeted, for a $40,000 goal for this year. I would like to communicate to our community a $50,000 goal, and, and I call it a stretch goal, I don't think it's that big of a stretch, but realistically, I hope to blow that, that number out of the water. But I want to make sure that if we blow it out of the water, that we celebrate it. And it has multiple, it's not just raising a little bit of money, but it's also the entire community coming together and saying, "Hey, look at what we did this year. We did, we, we had this goal, and we did, we raised this much money." And hopefully, everybody comes together, and, and that leads to bigger and better things down the road. We start tonight. What I'm asking all of you is to contribute to our annual campaign over the next couple weeks. That you communicate why we're doing this, and that some of you will be asked through the Development Committee to reach out to past board members, for, for them to contribute to the, to our annual campaign. In the past fiscal year, only 82% of the school's income came from tuition, 82%. So when we're talking to folks, you know, "Why, why do we need to raise money?", well, you say, you know, "We, we get a set amount that comes in, and we don't have any control over it, and it's only 82% of all the money that we, that we have, so we need to do better than that." But I'd also, another message that I would also like to get out there is, if we meet our goal, we'll be able to purchase enough Chromebook carts to meet the needs of our teachers and students. We, if you don't know this, let me share the bad news, being a person, a resident in Marlboro, we're the only school in Marlboro that doesn't have one-to-one. And we're getting closer and closer every year. Teachers are loving it, students are loving it, and we believe that if we have a successful campaign, we'll meet the needs of all of our, all of our teachers. So that's, that's a message that I think that everybody can kind of get their hands around and feel good about. There's a number of steps on and around the first of the month, I'd like to see, as they have done in the past, the President and the Executive Director send out a letter. I'd like for the first one to be sent out snail mail. I hear from a number of parents that they get an awful lot of emails and so forth from AMPSA, so I think that first one should be, "Hey, we got a letter from AMPSA." They still send those things? And they'd open that up, and then they would see the, both our Executive Director and President asking them to, to contribute to our, and then we're gonna, as we've already heard.
And Writing Awards for their visual artwork. And unfortunately, I don't yet have the, the artwork to show you, but that will be coming up soon, I hope, on an AMPSA update. So Anna Cherkinsky, who is a junior, so class of 2019, she received the highest award, which is the Gold Key, for her painting A Dog Walk, and she will represent AMPSA as she competes nationally for, from the National Scholastic Office. She's extremely, extremely talented, she's in AP Art. Indy May, who is only a freshman. And those of you who came to Spring Arts Night, if, if I were to show some of her artwork, I'm sure you would be like, "Oh, my gosh, she's the one." She's so incredibly talented, and she also is in the jazz band. She received the Silver Key, which is the second highest honor, for her painting Athena Persephone. And so again, watch for their, their pictures and more, more details about that in the AMPSA update. So, this is a very condensed version of the vision, because I know there's only so much time in the day, but I, I do want to say that clearly, we are hoping at some point, when we have new facilities, for really dedicated performance and rehearsal spaces. So, an auditorium and music rooms, which would allow us to have our plays re-performed, musical shows, art shows, all of that. We also are looking to have prominent locations to showcase student artwork year-round, so that we can have, you know, glass display cases, for example. We'd like to do more with online galleries. It has been really great, I should say, with Mr. Finkel. He's done so much with, with the AMPSA update, with all of our different media, to, to get a lot of pictures and news out there that wasn't out there before, so, so that's been nice. And I'd like to expand that even more with, with some online galleries. We'd also like to have dedicated full-time staff that's for chorus and band, so that we can also have more music offerings. And as I mentioned a little bit before, to have a visual media lab, so a lab that's dedicated specifically for visual media with all the cutting-edge professional equipment, so that we, that we can offer more for students in the way of that. So I know, you know, a lot of dreaming big here, and all of this costs money, but I have to at least put it out there.
Right. Never stop dreaming.
You picked the perfect night, though.
Yeah.
You're kicking off the campaign tonight.
So.
Maybe we can use the art night as a fundraiser.
I know, yes, we are always, yeah.
Auction out the art?
We are always doing, doing fundraising at the Arts Nights and putting those resources towards our arts programs, absolutely. So, the last, last thing, I just wanted to mention that next year, we're excited to be launching the National Art Honor Society. That will be launched in the fall under art teacher, Ms. Terrell. So that should be the second, you know, academically specific honor society here. And that will be a way to give our, give our, our students opportunities for scholarships, to recognize them nationally, and to also connect them with students nationwide. So that's something that we're, we're looking forward to doing next year. So, again, there's a lot more that I, that I could say, but does, does anyone have questions about that? I have one last.
Just one question about the, the AMPSA update videos.
Yes.
I think they're very well-produced and very informative and funny at the same time.
Yeah.
Are the students involved with the production?
I can't speak to that, because I can't take any credit for the AMPSA update, except that I love it, and I think it's added a lot, a lot of value to AMPSA. I don't know if anyone else wants to, to comment on that.
Mr. Finkel, this production studio.
Up till now, I haven't enlisted many talents of our students, but I have talked to Ms. Lindsay about maybe working with students for editing, shooting, I would enjoy that. I think we should just now figure out how to do that, sort of process it out.
Yeah, I think it's a good way to get them exposed and interested.
Yeah.
But they're awesome. Keep them popular.
Yeah.
I just have a comment, elaborate, elaboration, I guess, on the interdisciplinary aspect of the art curriculum, especially in middle school. All the time, the students make connections. It happened just this week, actually, we started a new unit, and I had a picture up, and they're like, "Oh, we saw this in our class." So it's such a strength. Yes, such a strength of our, of our middle school curriculum, and we have a lot of the connections with ELA, too. And even in high school, you know, if we do like an image analysis or something, and the students are able to go back to their art foundation that they get in middle school, and they know all the vocab to use to analyze an image, and, you know, they still retain that over the years, too.
Absolutely, that's a really good, good point.
Just have a logistical question. Are you able to put these slides up on the AMPSA website?
Absolutely.
Parents, parents will be able to see the mission?
Absolutely, yeah.
Last month's are up.
Last month's are up. These department ones are going.
Okay.
And the presentation will be out there, too. It just got posted today, last month, Dr. Jurey. So, parents will be able to go online and see the presentation as well.
Well, I just want to thank you all very much for, for your support and for listening. I know it's probably been a long day, I know you're not over yet, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will bump up the Development Committee presentation. This is the kickoff, the annual campaign kickoff.
So that really was very well timed. So as we've been talking about since January, is that really, in order to do Sarah's wish list, in order to adequately compensate teachers, in order to really build the kind of future that we want, we've got a, our fundraising has to move to a whole different level. And that requires new ways of thinking about it, and really, you know, kind of reimagining it from the ground up, trying to get some expert advice, but really pushing it forward. So we have, the Development Committee was unable to meet in, in March due to the snow, we're meeting twice in April. We do have coming to visit us at the end of April, and Rick and Pauline, I'll talk to you about the dates, they've been moving all day long. But we have two guest speakers coming in, one of whom is the Director of Alumni Relations and Annual Fund at WPI. And the other is the former Executive Director of the Boston Arts Academy Foundation, who are going to spend some time with us, kind of complementing some of the work that, that Mark and, that, that Mr. Vital and Dr. Lewis have been, and Ms. Lindsay have been doing, reaching out to places like the Parker School and Boston Prep, and all that, to kind of learn from the best to the best. As we begin that, we're starting AMPSA's annual fundraising campaign. And I would love to, on behalf of the committee, take credit for all the terrific work the staff has done. So, Mark's been in this position for four months now? Something like, and so he's been very active, he's really been out there with a lot of new thinking, with a lot of, a lot of energy, making a lot of connections. And Dr. Lewis has also, and Ms. Lindsay, have been very much involved in everything up to this point, and really, I think, cheerleading the way they need to be, and leading the way they need to be. And so, I asked Mark to come tonight, he's done a lot of work outlining the campaign, and this, in a lot of ways, will be the kickoff.
It will.
So, over to you, Mr. Vital.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone, for the invitation. Hopefully, I'll get through this in about five, 10 minutes, though many of my students would bet against that. Tonight, we budgeted, or you budgeted, for a $40,000 goal for this year. I would like to communicate to our community a $50,000 goal, and, and I call it a stretch goal, I don't think it's that big of a stretch, but realistically, I hope to blow that, that number out of the water. But I want to make sure that if we blow it out of the water, that we celebrate it. And it has multiple, it's not just raising a little bit of money, but it's also the entire community coming together and saying, "Hey, look at what we did this year. We did, we, we had this goal, and we did, we raised this much money." And hopefully, everybody comes together, and, and that leads to bigger and better things down the road. We start tonight. What I'm asking all of you is to contribute to our annual campaign over the next couple weeks. That you communicate why we're doing this, and that some of you will be asked through the Development Committee to reach out to past board members, for, for them to contribute to the, to our annual campaign. In the past fiscal year, only 82% of the school's income came from tuition, 82%. So when we're talking to folks, you know, "Why, why do we need to raise money?", well, you say, you know, "We, we get a set amount that comes in, and we don't have any control over it, and it's only 82% of all the money that we, that we have, so we need to do better than that." But I'd also, another message that I would also like to get out there is, if we meet our goal, we'll be able to purchase enough Chromebook carts to meet the needs of our teachers and students. We, if you don't know this, let me share the bad news, being a person, a resident in Marlboro, we're the only school in Marlboro that doesn't have one-to-one. And we're getting closer and closer every year. Teachers are loving it, students are loving it, and we believe that if we have a successful campaign, we'll meet the needs of all of our, all of our teachers. So that's, that's a message that I think that everybody can kind of get their hands around and feel good about. There's a number of steps on and around the first of the month, I'd like to see, as they have done in the past, the President and the Executive Director send out a letter. I'd like for the first one to be sent out snail mail. I hear from a number of parents that they get an awful lot of emails and so forth from AMPSA, so I think that first one should be, "Hey, we got a letter from AMPSA. They still send those things?" And they'd open that up, and then they would see the, both our Executive Director and President asking them to, to contribute to our, and then we're gonna, as we've already heard, we're gonna get the magical Mr. Finkel to put together a video, probably following a similar theme that we've had, where our Executive Director and our principal banter back and forth about the, the great reasons why everybody should be contributing to our annual campaign. And then show a whole lot of classroom pictures and various videos that, of all the exciting things we do here. I'm trying to do a little bit of community relations and public relations at the same time. So I have a letter coming from families in each of our four catchment towns. So the first one will be a, a letter of support from our wonderful town of Clinton. Ms. McDowell wrote her an amazing letter. We would send that letter out via email, just, you know, just to remind families, "Hey, don't forget, you gotta have to give to the, to our annual appeal." And then, at that time, on and around the first, end of the first week of, of April, various letters would be sent to our previous board members, asking for... various letters will be sent to our previous board members, asking for contribution. Four or five days later, we have a letter from a wonderful family in Maynard. And Ms. Newhauser, she too has written an amazing letter, and actually, she wanted to make it clear that it was from her and her husband's letter. So I think this was a joint project. And then I will, at that time, I will be sending out letters to all of our vendors as well, that week. Four or five days later, Ms. Hogan will be sending out a letter from a wonderful family from Marlboro. We have our school break upon coming back. And I also tried to find families that had two or more children here. In this case, we have a senior and an alumnus who have, you know, who is now at Westfield State, I believe, if I remember correctly. So she has a unique perspective as well. So she has an alumni and a senior. So she can, she's, I have not read her letter yet, but she promises me that it'll be wonderful. After vacation, we will follow, as we have done in the past, I'll get some folks from, some students from my Leaders of Tomorrow, and we'll do a telethon to those families who still haven't contributed. Hopefully, those first three weeks, you know, a bunch of names come off the list. The if, no, not if. Brian Bacala, who was a student, an alumnus, and now a teacher, has agreed to send out a letter from all three perspectives, kind of like as a culminating event, to reach out and say, look, you know, I can speak from all three positions, that every dollar matters. So Brian, that will probably be the last of our events for the annual campaign. But the campaign goes until the end of the year. The campaign will go to the end of the school year. Next year, we're talking to the development committee about making it, as Parker does in many other places, not just a, you know, a third of the year, but an all-year campaign. Events, we have a science night. This has not been confirmed because obviously, we want to get Dr. Jurey behind this. But that is a big science night. We thought, and this will be virtually the same time or a couple of days after the initial letter goes out, and that, you know, Dr. Lewis and someone from the board would speak together to the parents that are attending that night. The same goes, a couple of days later, that Saturday is the International Festival. Last year, I was there and it had to be, three to 400 families that came there during that, during the time of the International Fair. So it's a wonderful venue there to ask again, to shake hands and, you know, explain to folks why they should be giving to this community. And then it's more of a soft sell, but a sell nonetheless. There's two family forums that will be taking place on those dates, and there'll be a soft sell at those events as well. And then my last slide is just how we are going to, the media use. Well, obviously, historically, if you wanted to donate last year, you had to go on the board and then click board, for some reason, and then at the bottom it said donate, and then you click that, and then that's where you ended up going. We're talking about having some form of an icon, like right on the homepage of AMSA, that we have yet to decide whether it's going to say donate here or give us your money, however we're going to word it. But you won't have any problem finding out how to do it, and we'll make it as user-friendly as possible. As we said, we're going to have a video announcement that will also be sent out. We're going to blanket our social media pages, AMSA pages on Facebook, Twitter announcements, LinkedIn, press releases to the local three papers that cover our catchment area. And then I'm going to put a big seven-foot thermometer in the window up here of the upper school, kind of like, you know, you've seen when they've done campaigns in the past, so that you'll be able to drive by and say, hey, look at that, we're halfway there. Hopefully, we're bubbling out of the top and we need a nine-foot thermometer instead of a seven-foot thermometer. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Before any questions, this is great. One question for you is, remember when my daughter went to another school, they also had, you know, they had a fundraising set of activities, but then they had this sort of more passive way also, in addition, where you could sign up with like Amazon. So parents, whenever they make a purchase from Amazon, a certain percentage goes to the school. I'm sorry?
Amazon Smile. We do have it.
We have that. It's through the PTO.
Yeah, the PTO does it.
We're going to have a whole, I like to think that by next year, we're going to, because we have a whole, I think, there's a wonderful program that the Marlboro Education Foundation does. That's a nonprofit organization that supports, supplements the budget of the Marlboro Public Schools. And they have $50 pins that you can buy to recognize outstanding teachers. So that just tells, you know, that kills about four birds with one $50 bill. So, and I suspect that that simple little thing could raise, you know, $10,000 relatively simple, and you get an awful lot of happy teachers along the way, too. Things like that, I think the development committee will be talking about, that we're hoping to just start as a regular campaign as we go on into next school year.
That's great.
The PTO also has a, if you look at the bottom of the PTO email letter, they have a whole list of the fundraisers that the PTO is doing.
But, you know, Rick raises an interesting point, because here's a member of the AMSA community who isn't a parent, so he wouldn't be getting the PTO newsletter.
Oh, do you think? There are people, right? It's actually an interesting.
We're missing people, if we think about just the PTO.
Yep. Again, I think this is also excellent, Mark. At last month's BOT meeting, one of the suggestions I had made during Dr. Jurey's presentation was that on that science night, which I think is April 3rd, that it would be great if we extended an invitation to some of the corporate reps, which I know you're looking at various corporations for internships and also to make donations to the school. And wouldn't it be great if we actually invited them and they could see some of the apps?
That's a great, great idea.
Yes, I wanted to mention that again.
I actually, and for Dr., and I didn't even know what one was, so I had to like Google it. He asked for a refrigerated centrifuge, I think, which is basically this machine that shoots around for DNA. I had no idea what it was. So then I looked, how much does this thing cost? If I'm going to ask for it, I got to know how it costs. And they start around $2,000 and go up to like $200,000. So I made the plug. We'll see if we get one.
Yeah. Invite them in, you know, whoever makes them.
One thing I learned a long time ago, growing up in a big family, if you don't ask, you don't get.
That's right.
That's great. Any other questions? Chris, was there anything else that you wanted to?
You want to ask these people for money?
Do you want me to ask people for money? Yes, I would like to ask everybody for money, but apparently, they're all getting a letter from me, too, too.
Well, I honestly would love to be able to put in your letter that we have 100%, the board of directors has already contributed 100%, all members.
Oh, so you're looking for that before, before the?
Yes, I think that that would be a great message for families to see that the board has already stepped up.
Then I would like to ask all our board members to go on the AMSA website. There's a little button that says donate, and make your donations before our strategic planning meeting on March 31st. And I will report back on March 31st and chase those of you down who have not done your donation by then. So that way, when the letter goes out, April 1st or 2nd or 3rd or whatever that is, then we will be able to say that 100% of our board has contributed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes the report of the development.
Okay, super. Thank you. All right, let's go back then to our ED report. We'll go back to our regular agenda.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Mark.
Yes, that was great. Thank you both.
All right, I have 25 minutes. I'm not going to need all of that. I'm going to skip a little bit. I'm going to go right to the enrollment policy. So at a previous meeting, we put out an enrollment forecast for about 10 years to get us back to within our cap. Ms. Snow and Ms. Lindsay and our registrar, Ms. Edwards, worked really, really hard on that. So if everyone could just open that enrollment forecast up, it's on page eight of the enrollment policy and application for admission. So the board previously approved our plan to get back to cap, I think that was two months ago? No, that was at the special.
It was at our offsite.
Right, in January. And we've worked very closely with the Department of Education on that plan. Ms. Snow, as she always does, works very closely with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They subsequently after that contacted us, and we had a meeting with them last week, and they, in no uncertain terms, stated that we need to be much more aggressive, very aggressive. And they want us back to cap as fast as possible, and they've reminded us of our charter renewal coming up in 2020. So we like to be in good, have a nice relationship with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So once again, Ms. Snow, Ms. Edwards, Ms. Lindsay worked very closely with DEES to revise the, our forecast and to get back by the time our charter is up for renewal to 966. And the key way, as you can see, that really the only thing that we can do to do that is to chop our grade six enrollment, which is certainly not ideal. But that is the only way we can get back to 966. And with this plan that you see before you, this plan has been approved by Brendan at the charter school office at DEES. And he has, after he's approved it, he has sent it, is this correct, Ms. Snow? He has sent it to the commissioner? No, he's waiting, they're waiting for us, for the board to approve it. And then once, yes, thank you, once the board approves it, it then can go to the commissioner. Were there any questions about this?
Have they agreed to pay for the increased numbers of students?
No, they'll pay for Marlboro siblings, but they will not pay for.
So that's just a couple, right? How many of those are there? A few?
How many?
You say they'd pay for Marlboro siblings?
Yes.
Is that a big number? Is that a small number? Is that?
Over, the number over the cap, I'm not sure exactly what the number is.
It was pretty big, wasn't it? Yeah, it was 40, 50. It wasn't a small number.
Oh, yes, right. We were, I think that the cap was about 515, and I think we're at about 540. So they will pay for all of those Marlboro siblings. Yes, I misunderstood your question.
But just to clarify, we're still getting paid for 966 students?
Correct.
Max capped. Doesn't matter what town.
966 plus an additional, whatever that number is, 30, for Marlboro siblings.
I'm hearing two different statements. Yeah, that's where my confusion is, right. We will be paid for all Marlboro. I guess your question is, which number of those Marlboro siblings are counted over the 960?
No, are we getting paid for 966 students, or are we getting paid for more than 966 students in the budget?
Right, that's a good question. And how they calculate that. Yeah, I don't have an answer for you. Other than to say that they are paying us for all the Marlboro siblings.
Yeah.
But how is that calculated into the 27 kids that we are over-enrolled? That's your question, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, how many of the 27?
Right, how many, right, how do they calculate that? Right.
Yeah. I think maybe we could just get a clarification next month. I don't think we're going to have an answer tonight. Because I've heard both answers, I've heard in the January meeting, I've heard that we only get paid for 966 students. I've also heard that we get paid for 966 students plus some number of Marlboro siblings.
We don't know how they do the calculation, okay.
It would be useful for budget planning purposes to understand how we're paid. The other piece I noticed in here, there's some challenging, you know, I understand how difficult it is to fit, to slam down the 966 as fast as possible, but like in FY '20 or '21, we're going to be adding, looks like, 21 incoming eighth graders. Because the, if you look at FY '20, we have 113 seventh graders, and that becomes 134 eighth graders. So that's.
Yeah, that's a tough year.
So that's, it's going to be, I just, it's just a, we're introducing 21 new students into AMSA at a, two years into the curriculum, so. But I don't think, I don't see any other option that you have to make it fit, but.
You can add a lot more seventh graders the year before, because it goes from 113 to 113.
Right, but then you have to subtract off some other, you have to subtract off some other place.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I think, yeah, yeah. It depends on the, it depends on attrition, which we can't.
You could, you know, you can, if you get any extra attrition in the upper parts, you could push a few more seventh graders in there, which would help that. But I think just acknowledging that that's going to be a challenge.
That is going to be a challenge.
Yeah, they were very, very clear with us that we need to do this and do it quick. And they not only stated that, but they said that we need to put this forecast in our enrollment policy with the language that you see there in red.
The lottery's already been held, so the lottery for fiscal year '19, right? So this is basically reflective of the lottery?
Yes, right. So, and they had previously accepted that enrollment policy that you, all of you, approved.
Oh, so we don't have two years to bring it into line.
So that's why you see this year's, the high number, right? It's not as low as it could possibly be for next year, so it's 113. It could have been lower. So they subsequently came back to us and said, we've kind of reconsidered and we want you to be more aggressive.
So we don't have two years to do it.
Right, we got, and they very kindly reminded us of our charter renewal. So, and we wish to be, have a very nice relationship with them, so we will, I think it's a good idea to take their advice.
So I guess, in just looking at this, there's the obvious increase at eighth grade in '21, '22, and '23, where we'd be taking in a significant number. So that presupposes a certain number of applications that would allow us to draw those in. And by extension, the fact that if we don't get that number of applications, we'd be falling below the 966.
Yeah, it's an absolute art to enroll and to getting it right. And the state is very, very tough on making sure clearly now that we explicitly follow all of their rules. And it's, once you get a little bit out of whack, it becomes very difficult to get back in.
Yeah, especially with the six through nine fixed. Those grade numbers are fixed.
And the fact that we have to backfill.
Yeah, that's what I meant, the backfill, yeah. But just to talk to Ken's concern, how big are our wait lists right now for, say, seventh or eighth grade?
I don't know that number offhand, Sarah. Do you know?
Right, so.
Even in the upper grade, no, I mean, even in seventh, eighth, ninth, there's plenty.
Yeah, but you're talking, if you're going from the seventh, you know, seventh graders going forward from FY '20 to eighth graders in FY '21, that's 113 to 134, so you're talking about 21 students you'd have to pull in.
Right. Our wait list is much higher than, our wait list is much higher than 21.
For that grade?
For that grade.
You can actually go online, the missions, and you can see the waitlist.
The numbers.
The numbers.
Okay.
So to pull up a little bit out of that.
So to pull up a little bit out of that detail, so is there any concern about having enough, enough people, enough kids on the waiting list to make these numbers?
Yeah, that's another way to ask it.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think that's a concern.
Okay. A different question is, so I'm hearing some frustration coming from the state in our direction.
Yes.
Is there anything else that we can do, should do to satisfy them that we're playing ball the way they want us to?
No, we're, we are, we are working very closely, we're listening to everything they say, we are not putting up any walls. We work very, I mean from our end, it's a little frustrating because we did work very openly with them on the last forecast. Be that as it is, we want to continue to work very openly with them. We'd like to be renewed in 2020 with zero conditions unless, you know, a hallmark to other, a model to other charter schools and, you know, the, the folks at Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they have rules and regulations that they have to follow and that's what they're doing and that's what we need to do.
Do you think they appreciate our efforts?
Uh, yeah, I, I think so, I hope so. I mean, we.
Are they pleased and delighted with our efforts?
Well, they have to be even keel, you know, they can't, they, that's their role and they're, they're regulators, so they can't say you get a gold sticker here. But, you know, I think, you know, if, if you look at what we've received from DEES in terms of the site visit reports, there's certainly, the tide is a little bit more positive and hopefully that continues. And if they, you know, my general philosophy is if we show that we're open, that we'll work cooperatively, that we're not going to put up any, any walls, that we want to please them and, and, you know, I, I hope that that goes and we can build a strong relationship and so that in 2020, we are, all of our restrictions are taken away and they write a absolutely beautiful glowing report and they hold us up as a model. And if, you know, it takes a little extra work on our part to do that, we sometimes might scratch our heads, so be it. In, in the long run, that's what's best for our schools, to have the DEES on our side.
And I believe that we are doing everything that we should be doing, could be doing. I think it's important for us to be aware of how they're perceiving it. That if they're concerned, you know, we, we now have to do the right thing and say the right things, but we're also, we want to make sure that they're hearing it correctly. And so that's what I'm fishing for, I'm saying like, you know, are they, are they pleased with our efforts? Because I think that that's something that we want to watch, independent, in addition to doing everything right.
I can't speak to what, how they perceive our efforts, I can only speak to how.
Well, they said like this when you're talking to them?
Well, the last conversation was a phone call. So, you know, I, I think that they've, they've received phone calls from folks about our over-enrollment or they might receive phone calls from folks about that we have too many Marlboro students. So, you know, they, they respond to folks and then they come and talk to us. We just want to be, continue to be open and collaborative and work with them and do what they ask. And we will.
I feel like it's encouraging that we made those strides in the December site visit too, over the course of however, like eight, six or eight months or whatever it was. So hopefully, I don't know, maybe I'm too much of an optimist, but, you know, hopefully the fact that we've, you know, we've responded to their concerns thus far means that, you know, they, they know that we're making good faith effort, basically. So I feel like, hopefully encouraging.
Or could we go further in meeting their demand? Could we be more, be more aggressive in FY nineteen, for example?
FY nineteen lottery's already happened though.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, so you can't cut out, yeah. I mean, they told us this after, right? I mean, I, there has been a change in the Commissioner of Education, so I don't know if that has an effect. I mean, probably not macro level, but it might, you know, smaller operational things like this maybe. That may explain why they agreed and then subsequently changed it.
Yeah, it's got to be very sensitive to that, the politics of that and.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the charter school movement operates in a fairly constricted political environment.
Right.
So, which is unfortunate, but it's the reality that we live in, so the, the best thing to do is to face up to that reality and we'll work within the confines of what we have as best as we can and as cooperatively as we can with DEES.
For, oh, sorry, I was just gonna say for 2019, we might be able to address a little bit better depending on what happens for grades ten through twelve because we have the MSA Academy here, and there's always, you know, there's always some departures, so those numbers could be better too. But they could also be higher as well.
So I believe that the change to our current enrollment policy is all in red, are those the only changes? Yeah, so they're very easy for it to pick out and it is, they're all related to this enrollment forecast. So I will entertain a motion to approve this as presented by the school.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as, as written.
And I need a second? Second? All in favor?
Please, please, a second.
I know.
Liz, yeah, second, motion passes unanimously.
Great, thanks. I want to really thank Ms. Snow and Ms. Lindsay and Ms. Edwards who, they just have been working overtime to work with DEES and to, sometimes it's a little frustrating, but they go, you know, Sarah's here till way too late and on weekends and Linda works really hard and they work very collaboratively as well, so those efforts I really appreciate.
Yeah, and I just hopped on the website real quick. There are seven pages of waitlists for the sixth grade class, so it's, there's going to be no problem.
I don't think the question was sixth grade, the question was seventh, eighth grade.
Yeah, no, but I mean, just to get that, to move that along.
Reapply us seventh graders.
Exactly, exactly. So, I mean, it shouldn't be a problem filling that.
Okay, so help me understand how pages of sixth graders turn into pages of eighth graders?
Because a lot of, if they don't get in in the sixth grade, the parents reapply year after year until they get in. And obviously, getting in in eighth grade means you can come in high school, so that's a big turnaround too, when you think about it.
We've also had cases where now the younger sibling gets in first and then an older sibling then enters the older waitlist, so that, that can help adjust it too.
Hmm.
All right, so the next topic, which I'll kind of morph into the regular report, is the calendar. So as Ms. Murphy stated, and as all of you know, we've had lots of snow days, so our schedule has been pushed into the last week of June, which is the twenty-sixth. And Ms. Murphy mentioned that we conducted a poll of staff to figure if there were some alternative perhaps coming in on a Saturday to avoid going into the last week of June. The results were very split, almost fifty-fifty, so it might not be viable, although we are still working on some alternative plans and we actually sent a few suggestions, a plan to Department of Elementary, Secondary Education, and those plans have now gone on to the commissioner. He's probably receiving about a thousand plans from schools across the Commonwealth, so we are exploring some, some different options and see how the commissioner receives those. One thing we certainly can do is we can revisit our schedule for next year, which the board already approved, so it seems to be a night of rescinding previous policies. So we've revisited, Ms. Murphy and Ms. Lindsay and I discussed this briefly and we've discussed it with department chairs. So one idea, and this is the calendar that you see before you, is to reduce the December break so that the break starts on the nineteenth, the nineteenth would be a half day and not on the seventeenth. So it's a few days there. The advantage, the disadvantage of that is that certainly there were a lot of staff who really, really liked that really nice long break in December and I certainly appreciate that. On the other hand, being in Massachusetts and having all these fantastic nor'easters, it does raise problems when you get to June and, you know, it feels great, certainly did feel great in December when we had that break, but then as we see now, geez, maybe we shouldn't have done that. So this calendar readjusts that so that we would start the break on the nineteenth and not, not the seventeenth. So that gives us a little bit more of a window, a little bit more protection and there are also, you know, it's still a fairly respectable break so that people can refresh and rejuvenate and that certainly is really, really important. So it's still almost a two-week break. So that's, that's the key adjustment there. I don't know if you wanted to vote on that now or if you want to.
Yeah, are you proposing this?
Yeah, so this is the calendar.
This is your proposal, oh, okay. I wasn't sure if this was just sort of a plan B to think about or we actually wanted to vote on it.
No.
Okay, then we should probably have discussion. Does anyone have thoughts on this change?
So the little numbers in the corner, the number of school days?
Yes, right.
So this would have school ending on the eighteenth if there were no.
If there were five days.
The five snow days?
Five snow days.
So if there are no snow days, it will end on the eleventh?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Got it, okay, so it's including the five snow days.
When was the last time there were no snow days?
I don't think there's ever been no snow days, but.
I think there was one, yeah.
Yeah, so there's always one. In the nine years I've been here, there was one year there was eight. We're at seven now.
We're done.
So I don't know how people, do, do we have a sense of how the other communities are? How, what their schedules are like? I mean, certainly they don't, they don't tend to have two weeks, two full, two and a half weeks.
Yeah, from other districts everywhere, not just our core towns, but yeah.
Right, right, that's everywhere. I think that what's, I mean, I think that across the state from what I can gather, everyone's dealing with this, you know, end of June issue.
Yeah.
So it seems like that's pretty common for this year.
Yeah, how does, how does our schedule compare with Marlboro?
Marlboro usually goes into that week.
The last week in June?
Yeah, I think a lot of schools this year went till Thursday.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure my local school goes later than.
And I know even IC here in Marlboro went Monday, Tuesday, row? It was something like that, Monday, Tuesday.
I've seen districts that have ten snow days this year, I mean, and so the fact that we're at seven is not that bad, I guess, but.
Wow.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah, especially with the power outage is the last couple of.
Yeah, these last couple of. Well, in general, I think we've been careful too because we have students coming from farther away and we tend to be a little more conservative.
Yesterday was the absolute best snow call. Really, well, it was much needed. That was terrible.
I mean, how can you possibly, but everybody was so wrong.
It was terrible, yeah.
But at least got the half day.
Yeah, we should got the half day.
I kept waiting, I said, come on, the snow, please.
Now you want snows.
Trust me, I'm an eighth grader who was doing that too. Where's the snow?
I know, because they didn't want to go to school today.
Exactly, or they wanted to delay today.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? Does anyone have any objections or concerns to this proposed change? Maybe I should ask it that way. Okay, if not, then let's, I'll take a motion to approve the revised schedule.
So moved.
Okay, Chris?
Second.
Liz, second, all in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously. There we go.
All right, I promise that's the last change, resend.
You cursed it down.
What, you say it out loud?
Okay, so on to the regular report, so four updates. The first is kind of a big broad update about strategic planning and we'll start with whole child update. So you may all recall that from the September two thousand seventeen all staff meeting, all of our teachers and counselors were asked to rank order their most important concerns with our school and our, the policies that we have. And we had about a hundred staff members who participated. The number one ranked concern by far was how to educate the whole child. And then the second most important rank at thirty percent was inconsistent policy enforcement. So based upon that feedback that we got in September, we asked for volunteers, teachers, counselors, administrators, nurses to form the whole child committee. Ms. Murphy was one of the members of the committee. And the purpose of this whole child committee was to explore, given our very high expectations and very demanding curriculum, ways that we can better meet the social and emotional needs of our student population. The goal was not to lessen or water down expectations that we are very proud of, the goal was to find ways that we can help our students meet those expectations in a very safe, caring, and thoughtful school environment. So the whole child committee, and I would encourage everyone to read it, we can distribute it, it's a terrific amount of research that went into that. The committee did a lot of research. They interviewed teachers and administrators from almost a dozen schools, including the Norwich Technical High School, Connecticut, Buckingham Brown and Nichols, and Cambridge, Massachusetts, and Worcester Academy. They consulted a host of books, a host of websites, books such as the Middle School Student's Guide to Ruling the World, the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. They interviewed and spoke with lots of AMSA students. And then based upon all of this research that the committee did, they offered a very detailed written report with lots and lots of recommendations for our school. So this is just, this is by no means an exhaustive list, there were lots of recommendations, but this is just a few. They recommend the use of a risk behavior survey to assess the mental and social needs of our students, a structured, more structured directed study program focused on building strong academic skills, and a growth grit mindset, strong student-to-student mentoring program to help students academically and also to help foster the relationship between upper and lower school students, implementation of a day of caring focused on civic engagement and volunteer work in our community, a continuation, perhaps expansion of community meetings, which we've been running once a quarter, grade level meetings and wellness day, the adoption of a shared summer reading that could tie nicely into the strategic values or strategic planning that we're putting together focused on our values, the summer reading focused on the values that we wish to instill at AMSA. So Ms. Lindsay and I were very, very impressed with the work, the dedication and the commitment that everybody on that committee put into the report. I mean, it shows a level of profound care for our students that they, everybody did that, so it's very much appreciated. The report was sent to the entire staff and the staff was, has been asked to provide feedback and thoughts about what they think of the report and the suggestions. Department chairs have also been provided with the report as well. And so the next steps are to gather the feedback from staff, gather the feedback from department chairs and to, in a very open and very consensual manner, consensual manner, think about what are the recommendations and ideas that the whole child committee has produced that we can begin to implement in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen.
Is the report available to us?
We could, yes, we can definitely get it to you.
Yeah, we can just see.
Electronic weakness.
Yes.
We have it in the Google Doc, so it's easy to share.
So that's the first concern that teachers raised. The second most important concern that our staff raised was at the strategic planning PD related to inconsistent policies and that's certainly a, a, a top priority and it's a concern that we've seen raised frankly repeatedly at family forums. a concern that we've seen raised, frankly, repeatedly at family forums about that issue, particularly of family communication. So to address the concerns, which are shared by parents and also by staff, we've convened another committee, which just met this Monday for the first time. And the goal of this committee is to say, to establish a set of best practices, a protocol to clarify and enhance our communication with families beyond what is stated in our observation form in our handbook. It does discuss communication in our observation form in our handbook, but it's kind of vague and not very specific. So we're hoping that the teachers on this committee and the administrators on this committee can really sit down and lay down a set of best practices that we can all see the rationale behind, see the reason behind, and we can all unite behind and say, "Yes, that's what we need to do." So they're hoping to produce a draft. They met for the first time on Monday, and they're hoping to produce a draft by April break. So that is that. And then, another really important topic is the question of core values. We're happy, very happy to report that lots of progress on that has been made, thanks to parents and students and staff, and Cheryl Lower, who we've been working with and has done just a really terrific job. So right before the February break, Cheryl led three focus group sessions. One was for parents, one was for faculty, and one was for staff. And the goal of each of these focus groups, there were three general questions that you can see there. One general question was what do we want AMSA to be known for? One was what values do you believe AMSA should embody? And one was what are the gaps that you see exist between what we would like and what is the actual reality? And then this past week Cheryl reported back in a phone conversation with Rick Allen and I. And there were lots of great ideas, lots of values that emerged from that. I personally, I saw one common theme that emerged that I certainly don't want to prejudice what comes forward, but I personally took to heart one common theme, and that was the need for our school to focus on the hearts and the minds of our students, and that the two are not distinct, but they very much are, they very much go together, that to reach the mind, we have to go through the heart. They both balance each other, and they're both very important to educating a child. And many other common values that emerged from this, too, which I thought were terrific, was a common love of learning that we would like to foster at AMSA through the, all of the grades, importance of leadership that we want our students to demonstrate, importance of courage and grit and resilience that we want our students to have, integrity, certainly a very common theme that came up, and tolerance, respect, and empathy. So you can see there that there's certainly things focused on the mind, and there's things focused on the heart and values that we want our students to have. So the next step is, next week, a smaller group of about 15 people comprised of teachers, administrators, students, parents, and board members. We're going to be meeting this coming week, on the 29th, to try to whittle it down a little bit to a few core values. Hopefully, I think we've mentioned a lot that one of our goals is three, not four, not five, but three, so that everybody knows, they go on the front door, they go on our bumper stickers, they go on our shirts. So, really good work there. A second related topic is the topic of student safety. So in the wake of the tragedy at Marjory Stone and Douglas High School, parents and students have brought lots of concerns to Ms. Lindsay and I. At the most recent community council on the February 20th, this was the number-one topic. It was pretty much the sole topic. And then the March 6 Family Forum, it was probably about 75% of the focus was on safety. So lots of questions were asked of Ms. Lindsay and I. The basic thrust of the question was, as you can see there, that we have an open campus, we have three buildings, so how can we best protect our kids and our staff, everybody here, given the fact that we have a very open campus? So we want everybody to know, and certainly our parents and our kids know, that we're very focused on this issue. It just so happened that we had already scheduled a safety review with the Marlboro Police Department before the tragedy, and then at that meeting, we set dates for a review of ALICE procedures with our faculty and staff. At the March 6 All Staff Meeting, we reviewed ALICE procedures, I didn't, I should say, the Marlboro Police Department reviewed ALICE procedures with our staff. And then on the 12th and the 13th, the Marlboro Police Department will review ALICE procedures with students. So we're working very closely with the police department, hopefully establishing a very good relationship with them. We're also taking their advice on things that we could do to improve day-to-day safety. And so there's two particular things that we are looking at. One is, the police department stated that the key really is entrance point, making sure that entrance points are safe. So we're exploring things that we could do to tighten that, and we're also discussing the possibility of hiring an assistant dean whose number-one job will not be sitting in a seat and at a desk by a computer, but will be constantly out and about, particularly during transitions. I was just walking between buildings today, and you know, there's hundreds of students outside walking between buildings, and, you know, they need to be monitored, they need to be protected, and they need to be safe. So that, those are things that we're definitely looking at. At the same time, we had lots of suggestions and lots of ideas that came to us, metal detectors, armed guards. We appreciate all the concerns, and we definitely know where they are coming from, a fundamental concern with the safety of our students. At the same time, we want to, Ms. Lindsay and I want to try to balance the concern for safety, which is a very important legitimate concern, with the concern to maintain a feel of a campus that is safe but open, and where people feel welcome as well. And that's not necessarily easy to do. Related to that issue is the student walkout, which many of you may have...
Can I just make one comment?
Oh, yes.
Just on that, student safety. I'd just like to comment that I think also relating back to what you had mentioned before around focusing on the whole child. Focusing on the whole child alleviates a lot of stresses for students, which can prevent a lot of different types of tragic situations, including, you know, the ones we're concerned with in here. So I think it's great that we're focusing on the whole child also.
Yeah, I think that's a very important point, not to get into off top, but the individual who carried out the shooting in Florida was an individual who didn't have anybody to go to. Not to say that that's the number-one cause, but oftentimes that certainly is a contributing factor, and we want all of our students to know that they have someone to come to. So, related to that issue was the desire that our students, many of our students expressed to participate in the National 17-Minute Walkout against gun violence on the 14th. Shortly, very shortly after the shooting, our student government leaders, and we have absolutely fantastic student government leaders, came to Ms. Lindsay and I to inform us that they will be participating in a walkout, and they would do so regardless of consequences. And they were very nice and polite. They looked at me and they said, "Dr. Lewis, I like you, but it won't make a difference what you say, we're gonna, we're gonna walk out." And I know that doesn't, may not sound polite, but they were very, they really, truly were very polite, and it was very heartfelt, and their concerns were very thoughtful and respectful. So Ms. Lindsay and I, well, so our entire administrative team, vice principal Mr. Narak, our deans, Mr. Amaral, Mr. Friar, had lots and lots of meetings with our students, and we expressed to our students our concerns, so we had a lot of dialogue, and certainly the paramount concern is student safety. So once our students told us that they were going to participate regardless of consequences, we said, "Okay, we have to make sure that this walkout is going to be safe and not disruptive to school operations." And we also had to, you know, I stated that, we had to make sure that everyone was safe. And the second related concern that we had was about the politics of the issue, and the fact that we have a very diverse community with many folks who have many different ideas about the topic of gun violence, the Second Amendment, and it is not in any way, shape, or form our role as school leaders to urge our students to take one side or the other side, or to push them to take one side or the other side. And we also wanted to be very conscious of the fact that some parents might respond in different ways to this event. So we urged our student leaders to use the occasion not to speak against the Second Amendment, or call for limitations to the Second Amendment, or to speak against the President of the United States, or for urge, particular legislation. So we urged them to use the event simply to memorialize the lives of the students and staff who were killed as a result of the tragedy. So after tremendous amounts of discussion, and tremendous amounts of thoughts, and phone calls, and conversations, Ms. Lindsay and I, and it really, and we talk a lot about, and it's very important to Ms. Lindsay and I, collaboration and getting a lot of feedback, but this was a very, pretty much Ms. Lindsay and I making this decision, so we take all the blame if it didn't quite work out. And it was, frankly, of all the decisions that we made in 14 months, this was by far, by far, the hardest decision, without question. So we debated the topic, we reviewed what other schools were doing, I was constantly reading, what are other schools doing? What, you know, what are they doing here? What are they doing there? We consulted our lawyer, we analyzed guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we consulted the Council of Chief State School Officers. We got, once we put out the plan, we were expecting a lot of feedback, we got a lot of feedback, which we welcomed. There were a lot of parents and teachers who expressed concern, very thoughtful, well-meaning concern that had, makes lots of sense, that if we permit the walkout without consequences, it's an explicit endorsement of a political position, and would set a very tricky precedent. That's a very good point. So questions were raised, well, what if another group of students decide they're going to have a walkout against a different topic or a different idea? So it's certainly a very good question. Other teachers and parents expressed, almost from the opposite end, a very thoughtful concern that we were not doing enough to support our students in what they believe should be a very readily accepted uncontroversial position, opposition to gun violence. So both of those points were expressed by some parents and some teachers, very well-meaning, and this is what made the decision so hard. It was very well-meaning, had tremendous amount of merit to each of those points, but Ms. Lindsay and I decided ultimately, really for two reasons, to go ahead, to permit the walkout, and to do so without consequences. And we did so, as you can see there, we wanted to give our students an opportunity to demonstrate respectful civic engagement, whether they decided to participate in the walkout or not. And I can say that I was truly amazed by the behavior of the kids doing the walkout. I would probably say about 700 kids participated in the walkout, and I have never in my life at AMSA seen kids so well behaved. It was unbelievable. And Ms. Lindsay and I did nothing. They did everything. And it was a testament to our kids' ability to shine when they're given responsibility. It was amazing. So that was one reason. Then the other reason that we decided to go ahead with this was that we wanted to build a bridge between administration and students. We definitely want all of our students to know that safety is our number-one concern, that their concerns are fundamentally important to us, and that we will do more than just talk to them and preach to them, that we will truly listen to them and engage in dialogue with them. And then, last update, the big picture, I always have to end with the big picture. And I came up with a little fancy logo there, Buildings, Bargaining, and Bylines. So we're finishing up our 13th year, it's soon, will soon be over, and summer, it's hard to believe, but summer will be upon us despite the weather. And I think, you know, I always try to, always think of big-picture items, so I think that as we move towards the end of this year, move towards next year, there's certainly three big items that I see on the agenda, the three Bs that I've called them. So one is what the board has been working very, very hard on, is securing a safe and economically viable building for our school. Second key B is the collective bargaining contract for our staff that administration and the board has been working very hard on. We have our next meeting with the teachers and the union on Tuesday, and creating a byline, a set of core values that we can all unite behind. So I truly think that, you know, a good campaign slogan would be Buildings, Bargaining, and Bylines for 2019. It would be terrific if we could make a lot of progress on that, so that we can have an absolutely fantastic launch to 2019. I think it's important to have the big objectives, the big pictures, keep focused on that, and also to reflect consistently and constantly upon all the values and the values that we hold there, and reflect upon those values, what draws all of us, different and unique as we all are to AMSA. We come to AMSA, all of us, all of our students, all of our staff, all of our kids, many backgrounds, many faiths, many different ideas. And I think it's absolutely fundamentally important that we recognize those differences. We embrace them and we rejoice in them. And we remember, too, what draws all of us, why you're members of the board, why our teachers teach here, why our administrators work here. It really comes down to the very unique, I believe, our very unique and inspiring mission, which is that the belief, the faith, the hope, the idea that all children, regardless of background, regardless of ability, can excel in all subjects at AMSA. And our mission, this purpose, this great sense of purpose, gives all of our work, all of our disagreements, our day-to-day interactions focused on purpose, and it is a very unique and very inspiring mission. It's unique because many public schools do not accept such an idea. Too often, schools make excuses for why they do not achieve, and we do not, and we never will. We embrace these high expectations that are put forth in our charter, and we fight tooth and nail for each and every child that walks through our doors. We seek to educate our students' minds and care for their hearts, and we're inspired, truly inspired by the opportunity to do so. To come to a school that has that high expectation is inspiring. Our mission, our faith must be our constant companion, guide our conversations, inform our decisions, and help us craft our policies as the one constant that we can never afford to lose sight of. Go Eagles!
Are there any questions for Dr. Lewis?
My request never stops.
Well, I was just going to say, so Buildings, Bargaining, and Bylines, I mean, these are things that obviously the board is all working on.
Yes.
And if there's a campaign slogan, I would like to remind everybody that you have a multi-year contract, so you don't need to campaign to stay in this. We definitely want you here precisely because of things like this. Now, it's, I just want to make a comment about, I thought how the walkout was handled was brilliant. And I understand how, I mean, I heard from my student how it went, but I understand the thought process and what, I mean, hearing you say that it was that difficult a decision, and all of the different considerations that you factored into making it is admirable. It's greatly appreciated. I think it was, it definitely was meaningful for the students.
I just want to say, I had not heard about the walkout, and when you said 700 students, my draw almost dropped. I think it's almost the whole school, a couple hundred more.
Yeah.
And was it for 17 minutes that they walked out, and they, was it around the building?
Yeah, the goal was 17 minutes. It took a little longer because it was so...
Many students.
So many kids, and we did it, we gave them space.
And it was a snow day.
Yeah. Yeah, it was stunning to see.
And they went over to four kicks, so that was a safe place for them to be. So that helped.
The student government leaders, they were... The student government leaders, like, I mean, they were speakers. They had, the students had arranged.
They had it all set up.
Poems and everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
So being a snow day, we did not have school that day, or we did?
It was delayed.
Delayed.
It was delayed, right. It was a two-hour delay.
Okay. Got it. Yeah, that's great.
Okay, so we'll move on to chair business. And actually, that's a nice segue because two of those three Bs, we will be talking about in executive session tonight. And this is the third one, which is talking about strategic planning. So Rick, I'll let you.
Sure. So we've got March 31st coming upon us very soon.
Yeah, very soon.
And so what I'd like to do, maybe just in view of the time and so forth, is talk about what we want to do for March 31st, which is a strategic planning type session. And plays into a lot of what Anders had just mentioned. So, okay. Not too small. Okay, maybe we could just kind of go through this. So the purpose of the meeting on 31st. Also, one quick request is only a certain number of folks have actually gone into Board on Track and indicated whether they're attending or not. So if everybody could just please go in and make sure they do. Currently, the, this meeting was scheduled, I think, from nine to four. We think we can cut it down to nine to two.
Okay.
So five hours, we believe we could cover all the items in there. And so this is the proposed agenda on it. In terms of the meeting, the point is really to, thank goodness, finally start looking at a long-term, five to 10-year horizon for the school, which is great. And as we met last, in January, we were able to get to solid one-year goals, which is great. And now it's an opportunity to take a step further back and look at our overall vision and what we want to do over the next five to 10 years and get a few core goals in that space. So one request in that context is prior to the meeting, there's not a lot of homework, but Cheryl did recommend if everybody could take maybe 30 to 45 minutes to just take a moment to find an article, to find some artifact, to think that they could use as a touchstone, if they will, for their own thinking about where do we want to be, what's the direction of education, of schools, of, you know, careers, et cetera. So that could help inform the discussion we're going to have on that day. And so the idea in terms of the agenda, first item we'll do is just have an opening and an intro, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down. The second would be basically spending some time setting the context. So one is to review the core values that the folks, various teams have come up with, I'm sorry, not the various teams, various stakeholders have come up with. As mentioned, on the 29th, a smaller team is going to be looking at the five items that were mentioned and potentially some others to try to boil those down to three and then review it with the board to make sure we're all on board with that direction. The second thing we'd be covering in terms of context is just to see a kind of environment, doing an environmental scan in terms of what is the current state of things, in terms of our school, and in terms of the surroundings, in terms of the political climate, et cetera. And then just making sure we're all in, on the same page in terms of like, maybe even a quick SWOT analysis of what are our strengths as school and a community, what are our weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And hopefully, all of that can kind of inform what our goals ultimately should be looking forward. We'll have a brief break. Then we will talk about, a little bit more about our vision in terms of, Cheryl has an exercise she would recommend of where we kind of say what our future should look like and doing it from the perspective of being in the future and looking back and thinking about how we got there. And there's a lot of research behind the exercise there in terms of being very effective. Then we are going to go on to, one of the key things we want to, as part of that day, is come up ultimately with three goals that we see that we should be achieving and working towards over the next five to 10 years. And hopefully.
Not four, not five.
Three, yes. Because.
Five is right up.
And the idea behind the three is because over time, when we do our annual goals, those annual goals need to be coming back to these, these long-term goals. And if we have too many long-term goals, we will just, you know, kind of stumble over ourselves having too many goals.
I mean, they should be really big picture, right?
Yeah, really big picture, exactly. And they should be bold also. And, you know, I love bold and passion. And then finally, the last bit of the meeting, we're not going to spend a lot of time on that because I think we can, after leaving the meeting, we can spend more time building on it, but is, kind of as a group, to think about how do we actually achieve those goals? It's going to be challenging, like, what do we need to change? You know, we've got work going on in terms of our decision-making processes, but are there some frameworks, are there some processes, et cetera, we need to put in place to be able to help us start meeting those goals? So that's, that's proposed agenda. Again, five hours. We think it's a reasonable amount of, we think it's reasonably possible to do. I know I had a chance to, I think, send this agenda to Pauline and Alan and Anders. I don't know if you guys had to send back, if you had any objections to that, or if anybody else might have any thoughts around this agenda or tweaking it in any way.
I thought it looked great. I mean, I think it's ambitious. We'll see how far we can, Rick.
Will you just send out a reminder on the to-do with the details that you had up there?
Yep, absolutely. Actually, with this approval, I will send this agenda out to everybody.
Could you just roll back up to the homework?
That's, that's why I was trying to, I was tripling it down quickly.
So, all right, don't spend more than 45 minutes doing it. And then the product would be a, like, a one-minute summary of what I've, I'm just trying to think.
Well, is it just in our heads, or do we need to bring?
No, we bring it.
Hand it in and.
So, so it's more of an exercise that you actually have thought about certain things so that you can speak meaningfully as we're talking about vision and so forth, basing it on something or some, some research you've done. So it's not a homework assignment that you have to do and something, and it's more to make sure you spend some time thinking about where we should be going and have a point of view in terms of some aspect, whether it's political climate or education or careers or whatever. Okay. So, so in terms of, I will be sending out this list, but also, again, if you haven't actually gone in Board on Track to say you're attending, please do. We want to make sure. Hopefully, everybody's there, but if everybody isn't, we want to make sure we get a clear understanding.
I think we've got two people who have told me they can't make it, but I don't, there are some people who have not answered.
And again, I would just say, I joined the board now, I think it's almost, was it four years ago? I can't even remember. And it's, I was waiting for this date.
So finally, it's here on March 31st.
Snow or no snow?
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine, yeah.
And we're meeting here, right?
No, it's at the Garden Inn.
Oh, okay.
Good news is they have a generator, should anything go wrong.
Yeah, they won't have a snow day.
I went there on the day.
Oh, that's a good point, yes.
Yes, we were there for breakfast.
They have a generator.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to say anything about the 29th?
Oh, so I was going to send maybe a note out offline.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay. So the next topic is the survey task forces, which I put Mike's name in here, but I recognize that he's not here. So could someone else from those task forces be ready to speak?
Yeah, I mean, it's not much of an update other than saying that we're on track with the schedule that we set out to do. We submitted the final phrasing of the questions and then for both the family and the teacher and faculty survey to Panorama. And that was, what, Friday last week? And we've been going back and forth during the week with some edits. And we included some suggestions for the parents on questions. And, you know, what we decided is instead of adding more questions to a survey that was already long, we actually left comments on each one of the sections. That's open-ended questions. And instead of just saying, put your comments here, we kind of threw in, put your comments here particularly regarding these things, which would have been like three or four more questions separately. So that way they can answer if they want, and that's how they see fit. But like I said, we're on track to the schedule that we had set forth. They said they were putting those up in their systems for us to take a look. I think there's like a review that we see a pilot before it goes out, so going according to plan.
What is the timing for these surveys to go out?
Do you remember?
I think it was to go out after April break.
Right. Okay, so end of April.
After vacation. We wanted people to come, we didn't want to do the survey right before break, so the, and Panorama has all the materials now from both the parent and the teacher. One of them, they're doing their, their preparations to put it in their database and prepare the survey.
So we would be able to have the data by the May?
Board meeting? Probably June.
The June board meeting?
Yeah.
Depends on when, when the May board meeting is.
I think they're all at the end of the month now.
Maybe, optimistically maybe.
That'd be ambitious, I think. But pencil is true.
We might not have, especially for the open-ended questions, we probably wouldn't have those screened for the May meeting, but the.
Well, yeah, but.
Yeah.
The survey, the, the bars, right?
The, the survey.
Bulk of the survey.
Bulk of the survey could be available by May, but definitely by June.
Yeah, I think it'd be great if we could have it by May because then we could present it in May and then in June dig into it. Otherwise, we'd get into the summer.
So I did have a chance to see the questions and all, and they're looking great. One question, I don't know if you've talked about it with Panorama, is around, some of the questions had, have we improved over the last 12 months? And I just wonder when they do a computation of improvement?
Oh, yeah.
Or how things compare now versus previously? The questions that ask how have you improved or not improved over the last 12 months can skew those overall results significantly. So for example, if we're doing fantastic across everything and we say, we did not improve, well, yeah, we didn't improve because we couldn't improve anymore, you know? And so I don't know if you've had a conversation with Panorama around how to make sure we compute appropriately because of that.
Pull those out, yeah.
But you may want to have that discussion with them.
I remember that.
That's a good question.
I remember that was mentioned in the email, I just don't remember what the, the answer was. One thing to keep in mind is that we kept a couple of the sections, and that's what affects benchmarks, and I think Mike already mentioned this in the past, that we couldn't just pick and choose Panorama questions if we wanted to keep the benchmarks. So what we did is that there's a couple of sections that we kept all, and then other sections that we wanted to change the questions, we just wrote new questions that are not benchmark questions. So we're not going to get benchmarks for those sections, but we will for the couple that we left completely. I don't remember which ones of those are relative in that sense, that improvement and whatnot, but it's a good question.
This has also been a four-year process to get the survey right, so I was thinking we're actually getting a custom-designed survey that will help us going forward. Okay. Any other questions on the surveys, then? All right, Governance Committee.
So Governance, we talked, we talked about two items. First, an idea that Michael Glass had, came up with in consultation with others, to have some sort of bench or advisory council or group of people, I think, from the nonprofit level, it's called.
Corporators.
Overseers, advisors. Yeah. So the goal was, in Governance, we would, the idea would be to have some group of advisors, probably typically previous board members that are not able to commit to the full-time role of being a board member, but would be available to, to us or the administration for particular meetings if there was a set of expertise that they would have, that they could bring to the board. And in Governance, we talked about it, and overall, it was thumbs up, this was a good idea. We struggled a little bit with how best to implement it. One idea is that it could be done as a policy to the, of the board. So I would, as are people who are at the meeting, to leap in at this point.
Yeah, the idea really was to have some sort of other body without any governance responsibilities, but just that we could still continue to build on, on their expertise and solicit their advice. The last couple of people who rolled off the board, I mean, Scott at the end of his term, Allison and Tom, sort of mid-year, were all because they had changes in their personal circumstances, or professional circumstances, where they couldn't commit to being board members anymore. And so they sort of stayed on for as long as they could, but it, so it was this idea of, is there some opportunity that they could continue to stay in this advisory, whatever role, and still be kept up to date, but wouldn't have all the fiduciary responsibility and the governance responsibility that board members have? So that's the.
And it's about much more than getting work out of them as volunteers.
Right.
It also, in addition to providing kind of an off-ramp for people coming off the board, it's a recruiting tool and an on-ramp for people who consider for the board. And it's our need to have an ever-expanding.
Network.
Body, an ever-expanding, ever-expanding network of influential friends.
So that we can continue to develop.
And so that, and so the example, one example we use is where I work at the Community Foundation in Worcester. We have 300 corporators, and like 20 of them turn over every year. And we have, and they're chosen by nominating committees, so they're all picked, you know, because they have something to offer. They don't have to work very hard. They're not asked to do much of anything, except give a little bit of money once a year, but.
Which 300 people giving money once a year would be great, so.
You can't, you can't walk down the street without bumping into a greater Worcester corporate. So that's what we want to be doing for AMSA as well.
If anyone could think of a name for it, it would be great, though. We couldn't think of what we would call these people.
Advisory council?
Like advisor council, maybe? So.
Birds of a feather, Eagles.
The flock.
The flock!
So I think for next steps, I think Governance will continue to pursue the idea and possibly, and look to turn it into a policy or come back to the board with a recommendation of how to go forward.
Any, any thoughts, thumbs up, thumbs down?
Companies have advisory boards, that's what this is.
Well, as someone whose term is coming up to end, I would say if you were, you know, if we were going to incorporate some board, there ought to be a specific purpose and mission to that board as opposed to just sort of a general advisory. And I don't know that I could suggest anything, but just, you know, just as sort of an alumni club of, you know, of, you know, former board members and, you know, possible future board members. And that, you know, obviously, there would be some people who'd be interested in that, but I'm not sure, you know, not sure where, I'm not sure what would motivate people, but it would be, I think, where the greater purpose lies.
Great, that's good. Good to be back.
So I'm sorry, I had to look for a moment and I didn't hear. You were talking about the Board of Overseers Board or Board of Overseers. So I think one motive, to that point of what motivates, kind of from my, one, one possible motivation is this, that when you have a Board of Overseers, they, particularly if they've been with the board for a significant period of time over history, they can help preserve kind of some of that original vision and mission and drive and, you know, when we're thinking about five, 10-year goals, right, help keep that perpetuated. So that's, that's one.
Oh, that's right. And one thing Rick had mentioned, and I forgot to mention that, was also the idea that they could be invited to these types of strategic planning meetings, for example.
Yes.
Yeah. So the longer-term things.
Yeah, like having that woman last year.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
That was fantastic.
That was transformative.
It was.
She brought so much history.
Yeah.
You'd think I'd remember her name after all that. She changed my life, but I can't remember her.
Sandra.
Sat right behind me, too.
Yeah. You had worked with her. She was at DCE for a number of years.
Sandy Stotsky.
Well, turkey?
Sandra Stotsky.
Yes!
Oh, yeah.
Yes, that's what it was.
My former boss.
Yeah, there you go. We had her come to one of our off-site meetings.
Oh, yeah, she's amazing.
And it was transformative because she had so much history with, she was very involved, apparently, with Julia at the founding of the school. So she knew sort of some of what the intent was, which was very, very helpful. People like that.
Yes.
Because actually, and she's a perfect example of someone, but was very, I talked to her for quite a bit, and, you know, she lives quite far from here. She's very interested in what AMSA is doing. She wouldn't want to be a board member, you know, I mean, to come out here every month, but maybe twice a year? And, you know, on-call for administration, those sorts of things. So it was that idea. And we've actually had other board candidates that were in the same camp. I mean, that woman from. I mean, that woman from UMass Medical, right, who was the scientist who just could not, I mean, she really wanted to be involved, but could not commit, given her travel schedule, to being a board member. So there'd be opportunities like that in this larger, whatever we're going to call it, but... I think it's great that Governance is working on this.
Yeah, so we'll continue to work on it and look for nomination, you know, candidate nominations for, to join the advisory overseers, whatever we wish to call the body. But we do want them, it's not, it's not a name-only thing. We want, we really want advice and guidance. Second thing we had in Governance was we worked, we worked through what I described, updating the ideal calendar. And I put in the packet, the original, just as a reference, but we did a lot of it, so it's mostly just as an artifact. The biggest overall, the biggest overall change was moving the ED evaluation to be in sync with the school year instead of in sync with the calendar year, because we thought that just flowed much better. We had tried the previous version, it just didn't work. And beyond that was, I don't know, it's...
Well, I think it was saying, like, the survey, right, that we're more adapting to what the survey task force is doing.
Right, we, like, for the survey, we have a pulse survey in October and the major survey in April to reflect the current practice. Also put in, in regards to, this is even before we got the report, Dr. Willis's report, we put in a various, four places during the year where we're doing the student attrition and waitlist report so that we, as a board, can see our, see that we're tracking to the plan that's been described by DEES that we've, now planned to track to. And I think finally, the one thing that we didn't get a chance to discuss in Governance because we were pressed on time, we really didn't get much chance to talk about, say, April, May, June of the year. At the very bottom, it was a discussion of monthly reports as to what the board would like to hear about each month. And the one that had previously been in there was personnel changes. What, and then I had, I had taken the initiative to add one more, which would be a fundraising slash grants received report each month to show, show our progress toward that goal. And open it up for discussion or for other, other things that we should be hearing from monthly, from, either from any of the committees. I know it's a lot to digest.
So this isn't necessarily another monthly report, but I know one of the goals we have over this next year is around decision-making. And so I think about, when we think about decision-making, how do we become potentially more efficient in decision-making as well as deal with some challenges where, you know, the administration may need to make decisions pretty quickly and they can't get input from the board and they need guidance, et cetera. So when thinking about all those things, and as we look at that, I wonder how we may want to, taking a step back, when we look at the schedule and, and the function of the board, right, you think about Board on Track, it talks about, like, what is it? What is the goal, like 80% or 90% of?
Strategic.
Should be strategic. Like, how do we meld being strategic with report-outs, right, and decision-making? I don't know the answer to that, but I think as we start thinking about over this year, decision-making, I think we need to figure that out so we become more and more efficient and effective as a group. I don't necessarily have anything to say right now, but I think that's what, I think we corporately would be able to inform this a little more for that discussion.
Yeah, I think, you know, some, what some boards do is, you know, there are consent items on the agenda, whether there is, you know, there isn't discussion. It's like, all right, here's the 64 things that you approve every month. You read them in your package. Any objections? Done.
Yeah.
Because I think, to your point, where we can lose time is, to make a report is to invite comment and question. So you're really taking up, you know, all that time to do those things.
Yeah, and to that point, I think, like, what's, is the function of the board at one level to be very steering-oriented? And so committees come with questions, they need answers or guidance on the board for decisions made. And how do you make the board's processes streamlined to achieve that?
That's right. The board doesn't need to talk about it because the committee has.
Like, committee does work on behalf of the board, not in place of the board.
But not every discussion the committee has has to be repeated by the board.
That's true, but the decision, we were talking about decision-making. So the committees aren't supposed to be making decisions, they're supposed to be presenting recommendations to the board.
True.
Yeah.
Yep.
So Roger, are you looking for an approval on this or what? Do you want, or just do you want to have, and people decide or do you want input for next time?
I could see that we could, we could go, we could approve it at this point, or we could send it back to Governance for one more review and then come back for final feedback.
My only question is, you say important items are in bold. Suppose, I mean, I think AP results are important, but they're not bolded. Is that important? When you get MCAS bolded twice, I don't know what the importance of the bold is.
That's actually a very good point. I don't know that we even need to have the bold.
Is that a reference to the old one?
Well, that was, that was a style that was in the bold one, just to call out the strategic items that the board just absolutely must do. And, I mean, I could, you could just, just strike that because all the items are important.
Yeah.
And...
Good point. They're not, they're not actually more important than the others.
And un-bold, the ones that are bolded.
Yeah, just un-bold, un-bold everything. I think the biggest thing I'm looking for is, is anything missing or misplaced?
I don't think we had four attrition and waitlist check-ins. We have four? I think it's either December or January.
Well, we did.
I know we needed one in October.
So we have, we have, well, there's, there's two, so I set it up with one in the July-August timeframe before the school year starts to see that, and that's just a check-in. There's the detailed one in October where we have, go into more detail. And then there's a, a brief check-in, let's see, where did I put it? In, in December, there's a brief check-in and then after, and then March is the final. After March 1st, we're locked in for the school year.
But there's another January one.
Oh, did I get it in January?
I don't think that January should be there.
Okay, I, that was a cut-and-base error.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
I'm like, there seemed to be a lot of check-ins on the roll. It's like six of them.
Right, yeah. So I think, I had moved the January 1 to December to try to get as much out of the January meeting.
Yes, that makes sense, okay.
Good catch.
So to your question, is there, do you anticipate anything substantive would come out of another Governance Committee meeting in terms of changing this, or should we just go with this at this point? And then it may change anyways because of other factors, so we can just provisionally go with this?
I'm pretty, you know, we've discussed in detail Governance, I would feel comfortable with going forward with it, striking the one bullet in January.
Okay. Then shall we approve? Motion to approve, then?
Assumed.
Okay. Second. A little second, and...
I did just, I'll second everything.
Okay, all in favor? All right. Motion passes unanimously, so we'll approve that. Anything else? Governance?
Nothing else in Governance.
Oh, there was still the SMART gold. Oh, yeah, we still didn't talk about that decision process one, that is still an outstanding one. Yep, we'll try to get to that. Maybe we'll be able to do that a little at the strategic planning. Okay. Education Committee?
Okay, so our March Education Committee was canceled due to the storm as well as the rescheduling, so we just plan to tack on some extra time in April to try to make up for, for some of our lost time. But I did want to give an update on the first trustees' day, which happened this past Tuesday. So we were fortunate enough to have six trustees attend the day and we had 13 teachers participated and the trustees had an opportunity to see 22 different classes throughout the day. We had a great opportunity to see different teacher, teaching methods and styles as well as the vast diversity of the curriculum offered at AMSA. I do want to thank Ellen, Lindsay and Lynn McCluskey for all their efforts pulling the logistics together for the day as well as the teachers who welcomed us into their classes. I hope we can continue this in the future role, to your point earlier, and hopefully next year include more teachers and trustees. I do just want to thank Sarah Preston as well for being here this evening to present on the Language and Arts Department. We appreciate the opportunity to see a deeper dive into the AMSA curriculum and we look forward to welcoming Lubis Schmidt next month from the Math Department to hear about the math curriculum at AMSA. And that is it for tonight, since we did not have a meeting.
Great. And Finance and Audit, we're skipping. And Development, you don't have anything beyond the annual giving, so we're done? Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation strategies to consider the purchase and lease of real property and to discuss strategies for collective bargaining because doing so in open session would be detrimental to AMSA. Second?
Was that it?
No, it was Chris.
Chris Lewis or a team?
And we do need roll call, though, to go into executive session, so...
Yes?
Yes.
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 And I am inviting Dr. Lewis and Lisa O'Connor, and is Leana there, and Leana McLaren, to join us for executive, for the first part of executive session.